We are now live.
Welcome. Good evening, everyone. I am opening this meeting of the Santa Rosa City School Board today, January 12, 2022. Happy New Year, everybody. We are going to start this evening's meeting as we have done throughout the school year with a territorial land acknowledgement. So at this time, if we could bring over Donna Fernandez.
Donna is on her way over.
Great. Ms. Fernandez, welcome. It's my pleasure to introduce Donna Fernandez for this evening's acknowledgement.
Thank you so much.
And as you're here now, I would like to just give a little bit of background, let folks know who you are. Ms. Fernandez is a member of the Southeastern Pomos tribe from Elam Indian Colony in Clear Lake. She's a National Board Certified Teacher of Mathematics for Adolescents and Young Adults. She's also a seasoned secondary math teacher who has used her training and talents to teach math at Navajo Preparatory School, which is an authorized international backglow-rite world school, offering the diploma program in New Mexico since 2009, and she was the IB Coordinator, Manager, and managing all the aspects of the program. She's currently an instructor of computers for college and careers at Piner High School. She serves her community by volunteering as a governing council member at Dream Dine Charter School and is a regional coordinator for the Alliance of Indigenous Math Circles, an organization that seeks to increase the number of indigenous students who choose to pursue post-secondary STEM degrees. And she was recently awarded a Sequoia Fellowship from the American Indian Science and Engineering Society. So it is an honor to have you with us this evening, Donna. I'm going to turn it over to you.
Great. Hekethemah wigthen, Donna Fernandez, Ailambuk. How are you, everybody? And thank you for having me to present this land acknowledgement. I am Donna Fernandez. I'm from the southeastern tribe from Elam Indian Colony in Clear Lake Oaks. And tonight, I am honored to bring this land acknowledgement. And I'd like to say that we acknowledge that the schools within Santa Rosa City School District and its Board of Education meeting is taking place throughout the unceded territory of California, home to nearly 200 tribal nations. As we begin this meeting, we acknowledge and honor the original inhabitants of our various regions. A land acknowledgement is a critical step towards working with native communities to secure meaningful partnership and inclusion in the stewardship and protection of their cultural resources and homelands. Let's take a moment to honor these ancestral grounds that we are collectively gathered upon and support the resilience and strength that all indigenous people have shown worldwide. I am honored to teach in the Santa Rosa School District at Piner High School, which is on the traditional unceded territory of the tribes of Southern Pomos, Coast Miwok, and Wapo. It is with great pride in my own indigenous that I also acknowledge our people are still here and bring great contributions to our community. Thank you for this time to recognize our original inhabitants.
For the past and the present and for the future of our school community. With honor and gratitude, thank you, Donna, for your acknowledgement and for being with us this evening.
You are welcome. And it's my pleasure, again, my pleasure, and thank you for doing this land acknowledgement. This certainly shows great strides in working with the original people of this land. And anytime, I will be back anytime you want me to be.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fernandez.
All right, we are moving on to C2, our Pledge of Allegiance. If we could all rise and unmute. I pledge allegiance to the flag
of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, well, this is our first meeting of 2022, and my first full meeting as chair, so be gentle, folks in the audience. 2022 has already been a long year. Twelve days in, and we are all exhausted. So I wanted to start this meeting by grounding us in the new, new reality that once again, we are seeing COVID infection rates go up. And we are facing necessary yet disruptive public health orders that impact our day-to-day lives, and we just have to acknowledge that this is where we are right now. And even though it's a new year and we want to be optimistic for better days ahead, most of us are pretty, pretty worn down. I heard this new term last week that I think adequately describes where we are right now in this next phase of the pandemic, the frustration variant. And we're stressed and we're tired and we're angry and we're scared. And after two years, we just want our lives back. We are understandably frustrated. It's going to be a hard few weeks ahead for us. Our students and our staff are going to feel the impacts most, and they're the ones we need to give the greatest support to. So hug your kids a little bit harder and thank the teachers and staff a whole lot more, including our superintendent and her team, and have compassion for parents and families. These are dark days. The board, my colleagues, and I, we are going to continue to face criticism for actions and inactions taken, but we will continue to move forward. We will continue to put the help and the safety of our students and our staff first. And we will make mistakes, but we will adjust and we will keep moving forward. That's how communities survive during times of crises. And in a crisis, you don't always have the luxury or the time sometimes to even have resources to do what needs to be done. But right now, we are facing a whole buffet of bad options, but we have to move forward. Most agree that keeping our schools open and minimizing missed school days is the best option for students, their mental health and their academic health. Definitely for families as well. During tonight's meeting, there will be discussion on the things we are doing to keep schools in person while ensuring the safety of students, families, and staff. And we are committed to giving the district's best effort in doing this. So when we move forward with our meeting, we're on Agenda Item C3, Reports of Actions Taken in Closed Session. We do have actions to report. The board took action to approve OAH case number 2021-100556, and it was approved 7-0. The board took action to approve the recommendations of staff on five student expulsions, case numbers 21-2207, 21-2210, 21-2212, 21-2213, and 21-2214. The board unanimously voted on these case numbers. Moving on to Agenda Item C4, Items Considered in Closed Session for Action in Open Session, there were none. Agenda Item C5, Statements of Abstention on This Agenda. Are there statements of abstention tonight, board members? Staff? Seeing none. Moving on to Agenda Item C6, Adjustments to the Agenda. Are there adjustments to be made? Seeing none. Moving on to Agenda Item C7, Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items.
President Sheffield, would we like to ask for public comment to see if anyone wishes to pull a consent item for adjustments to agenda?
For pulling consent items? We'll open it up for public comment.
So, members of the public, if there is an item in the F section of the agenda, that's the consent section of the agenda, that you would like to make public comment on, this is the time in the meeting that that item needs to be pulled, but the comment period will not come until we get to the F section of the agenda. So if there's anyone in the public who would like, I'm going to lower all hands. And if anyone in the public would like to have an item in the consent part, the F section pulled for comment later in the meeting, please raise your hand. And we will call on you to say which item that is. And it looks like Kim, the mic, something from the F section pulled. Kim, are you there?
Yes.
And your name?
Kim.
And your last name?
Grauskas.
And which item would you like pulled from the F section?
I can't see the list of agenda, but I would like to speak about the banning of parents from supporting their children.
Banning of parents from supporting their children?
While they compete in athletics, we've supported them their whole lives, and now you're banning us from supporting them?
So perhaps this would be under COVID-19 safety?
I don't know. It seems like it's a Santa Rosa City School decision based on the guidance from Sundari Mays, which I just listened to her report, and she said it's
Yeah.
Santa Rosa City School decision to ban parents from watching their own children.
Okay, so Kim, I'm sorry, Kim, Kim. That is not in our consent item. So I'm going to move on. There are a couple other hands raised for items.
Okay, so when, when would I speak on this item?
Well.
Item E4.
That would be E4.
Yeah, okay, I'd like to speak then, please.
We'll be, we'll be addressing that shortly.
Okay, thank you.
So.
So when we get to item E4, we will ask for hands to be raised at that time for that item. Next, for pulling a consent item, is Micah Carlin Goldberg.
Hello, I would like to speak about F11, the item about the Santa Rosa City Schools' minimum wage increase.
Okay, thank you very much. And next is CSCA 75. And who is this?
Yes, it's Mary Lehman. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to speak on F8. And encourage, when you bring it up, encourage the board to vote in favor of this.
Thanks, Mary. Looks like those are all the hands raised for adjustments to the agenda, President Sheffield.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Now we will move on to C7, Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. Opening it up for public comment on non-agenda items.
Okay, and members of the public, I know a lot of hands are coming up, but as is our practice, especially with public comment on non-agenda items, I'm going to lower all hands and ask that students who would like to make comment are the first to raise their hands. So any students who would like to make public comment on an item that is not on our agenda tonight. So for example, if you wanted to comment on the updated COVID Safety Handbook, you would wait until later in the meeting when that item comes up. These are for items that are not on the agenda. And it looks like there are no students, so now we can ask for any member of the public that wants to comment on something that is not on the agenda to raise their hands. And President Sheffield, what is the time limit for public comment tonight?
That is a good question. I see we have 115 participants. We know we're going to have a healthy discussion. Let's go with two minutes.
Okay, thank you. So the first public comment, please keep an eye on the timer. We'll have a clock hopefully to help you out, is Shelby Prior.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, board and President Sheffield. I know I've had some words for you in the past, trying to go ahead and reiterate over and over again the urgency of making decisions for individuals' health. Currently, it's been brought to my attention that the county is operating several locations that are not CLIA certified. I don't know how much you know about science or trust it, but I would say that if individual spaces are operating and not certified to do so, the information that they're feeding you could be inaccurate. From what else I've discovered is that people have vested interests in our community, in your positions, not to point fingers, but people aren't disclosing their economic interests when dealing with mandating certain things for people in the public. I've requested Form 700s from every person in this position. We're starting to come to light to follow the money. I think it's very interesting that our pooled investments for the state are compiled in Pfizer, Merck, and other companies that hold interest in keeping these mandates running. I don't know how much you know about science either in the subject of CT rates and running tests until you get the positives that you're looking for, or falsified tests, or the fact that the PCR tests have been removed for general use around the world in multiple countries. I understand that we have a very hard path in front of us, but I would appreciate for you to look at more sources than just what you're being fed by Sadari Mays. Her interests financially do not match those of our interests, the stakeholders. I'd ask that you go ahead and continue to search inside yourself to figure out what morality comes from you making decisions for other people. I greatly appreciate your time, and I hope that you guys take all these things into consideration.
Thank you. Next is Kim. And Kim, could you state your name once again for the record? Could you say that again, please, Kim?
My name is Kim.
And your last name, please, for the record?
Grauskas.
Thank you.
I am heartbroken at how quickly things have transpired. As parents, we support our children in all areas of life. We're there to celebrate them with the highs and encourage them in the lows by banning parents from supporting their children in the physical and mental health while they do something they love. It is heart-wrenching. A basketball gymnasium is huge. Parents can easily social distance in the gym and watch and cheer for their children. This restriction is worse than it was one year ago when family was allowed to attend the games. We are two years into this, and yet we are making even tighter restrictions than the other counties in California. I beg you to advocate for the children. These are their memories that they will take with them into adulthood. For some students, this is their senior season, and their parents will not even be allowed to watch them in their last game of basketball. Please change your mandate to allow families to support their children. I listened to the County of Health meeting today, and Sundari Mays just said it was a recommendation and that the Santa Rosa City Schools had the power to choose how to enforce it. And you're banning parents from supporting their children in what they love and not allowing them to be there. What's going to happen when a kid gets hurt and their mom is not there to support them? I've been with my daughter for the last lots of years helping her in sports. She tore her ACL. I took her to every physical therapy appointment, and I've been there, and it would break my heart not to be there for her senior season. This mandate ends when basketball season is over. So you guys have a choice, and you can choose to let parents support their children by not banning us from being there to support them. And it, I don't know if you guys have kids, but just, you can't be there to support your kids in that. You can go to a professional game. You can do lots of things, but you can't support your kids. And I feel like you are targeting the kids and targeting the parents with this order.
Thank you. Next is Kelly Clark.
Hello, this is Kelly Clark. Good evening, President Sheffield, Santa Rosa City School Board members, principals, and the community at large. In our 41st year, the Martin Luther King Jr. Birthday Celebration Committee of Sonoma County continues to honor the legacy of Dr. King Jr. with our annual community-wide event. This year, we applaud the King family's admonition to remember the deepest meaning of his lifelong work. Their call to action asks that we, as a community, not just celebrate the birthday and the dream of a more just future, but build and sustain his vision together. In his name, we commit to honoring these efforts and express our continuing gratitude for his inspiration. We, as a committee, are aware of the many opportunities to contribute during this unsettling time, and after careful consideration, have decided to continue with this year's event. The Oratorical Contest, Poster Contest, and Art Gallery will be closed to the public but prerecorded for the virtual event airing live Sunday, January 16, 2022, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. We've also delivered flyers to each Santa Rosa City School to help highlight the event, so principals, please be on the lookout. The virtual Zoom event ID number is 867-7690-7048, and the passcode is 5019148. You can also watch the event live on Facebook at MLK Committee or search MLK Birthday Celebration, Sonoma County, in your search engine. The committee is extremely excited about this year's event and the amazing creative students who have participated. Just as a reminder, the last day to get posters to Brookhill Elementary is tomorrow, January 13, by 3:00 p.m. Thank you to Indy and her team for all their assistance and support, and thanks to all of you for what you do to keep our students learning and safe. Have a great evening, and we hope to see you Sunday.
Thank you. And next, for public comment on a non-agenda item, two-minute limit, is Micah Carlin Goldberg.
Good evening, Santa Rosa City School Board, Superintendent Trinell. My name is Micah Carlin Goldberg. I teach at Steel Lane Elementary. I've spoken to the board several times this year about the fact that we are decidedly lacking in instructional assistance for our special education classes at every site, including mine. My site has multiple special ed classrooms. Most of them do not have an aide at all this year, still halfway through the year. This is unsafe and violates our students' IEPs. Our school is doing their very best. They're pulling instructional assistants from all over the place to cover as best as we can. Our RSP instructional assistants have been helping to cover with our special ed classrooms, but also means that they're not serving the RSP students they were hired to serve. So far as I can tell, Santa Rosa City Schools' only action in attempting to fix this problem is posting jobs on EdJoin and hoping somebody applies to them. When we pay less than the city minimum wage, that's not a really winning proposition. I've yet to see anything from Santa Rosa City Schools about what things they're doing to change how they're interacting with the public in order to get us the instructional assistance that our most vulnerable students need. I really encourage the board to ask the Santa Rosa City Schools District Administration what they are doing to actually fix this problem, other than post it on EdJoin and hope somebody applies. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Catherine Howell.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I am going to read a letter that I believe our board members have already received on behalf of a teacher at Maria Curro High School, Cory Lot. And the topic of this particular letter is about attracting and retaining qualified teachers through progressive hiring policies. First, I'd like to acknowledge your hard work on multiple issues during this complex and challenging time in education. Thank you. The current teacher shortage is well documented and felt throughout our county. It is time for the Santa Rosa City Schools District to remove outdated barriers to hiring and retaining highly qualified teachers. One step towards attracting and retaining qualified teachers is for SRCS to begin giving years of credit on the pay scale to credentialed teachers transferring from reputable private schools, even if those schools do not require all teachers to have credentials. With SRCS's current policies, there's a good chance that a veteran teacher will be offered the same pay as a first-year teacher in the classroom. This policy must be changed. SRCS must also find a way to honor on the pay scale part-time credentialed work. Currently, someone has to work 0.75% of the days of the year in order to get any years on the initial pay scale. This outdated rule does not account for those who work on a block schedule. A person who works 60% on a block schedule could not be on campus 0.75% of the days in a year, but someone working 20% in all-period schedule might end up on campus for 75% of the days. Punishing those who work part-time, especially in today's climate, is unacceptable. We know people work part-time for a variety of reasons, including, but not limited to raising children, taking care of sick family members, and districts not having enough sections to offer teachers. So the letter goes on from there, but please reread the letter and consider changing these policies to allow our veterans' teachers to transfer to Santa Rosa City Schools and take their years with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Scott W. Scott, could you please state your full name for the record? Scott, are you there?
Hey, do you hear me?
Yes, could you please state your last name for the record?
My name is Scott Westerman.
Thank you.
So my purpose in commenting tonight is to implore the board to reinstate the 7th and 8th grades at the Santa Rosa French-American Charter School. I'm the father of a 5th grader and a 2nd grader, currently enrolled in SRFAX, and both my children began French immersion education in preschool and continued into the elementary school and kindergarten. We chose the French-American Charter School because we really appreciate both the style and structure of the French education and the curriculum and teaching style, and we love the global community that not only makes up the school, but also that the school serves within Santa Rosa. As a parent, I want to see nothing more than to see my children continue to thrive in this environment with the same academic rigor and global experiences they've had to this point. So as such, I'm asking the board to reinstate the 7th and 8th grades, so I and parents like me can assure our children all the way through high school in a consistent, academically challenging, and globally conscious manner. Thank you. Appreciate the time.
Sorry, Mr. Westerman, I might have cut you off a little bit when you said thank you, but thank you. Next is Ben Wolf.
Hi, thank you for having me here tonight. Good evening. So my, my name is Ben Wolf, and I'd like to start by thanking you for, in general, your continued commitment to our schools, the kids, the families, Santa Rosa community. So much is going on right now, but I'd also like to start with an attitude of gratitude that we've been discussing at previous meetings as well, and express my thanks to all the substitute teachers that are out there that have stepped up in, in all our schools to help us through this time currently. They do a ton for our students and schools, and I know don't always get to hear the appreciation. So I'm the president of the Parent Association at the Santa Rosa French-American Charter School and have two kiddos attending there, my daughter in 5th grade and a son in, in kindergarten. And my daughter's been there since, since TK herself, and I'm amazed to see how she's progressed in language. She speaks and reads fluently in French now. She's developed a love for language in general, seeks out opportunities to learn about languages from all over and cultures from all over as well, and it's been fantastic to watch. So I'd like to thank you for supporting language immersion education in our district, especially as a public school option for both the, the French-American Charter School, but also over at CCLA. Just great to have two different options here for, for this in a public school system. So middle school is rapidly approaching for a 5th grader, and of course, for the 6th graders as well in the near term here. And it'd be fantastic to have a continued option for them at the middle school level. I can also tell you that as a representative of our Parent Association, I can speak for many of the parents of younger students at the school, in addition to the parents of the 6th graders currently, that would love to know their kids have an option going into 7th and 8th grade. And who knows, maybe even in the future, a full TK through 12 public language program if we could continue the French IB program or something like that in the future. So knowing that this would be there would just be, be fantastic for the community, I think. So I just want to end with, please consider reinstating the, the SRFAX charter to include the middle school, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Melissa Liu.
Hi. My name is Melissa Liu, and I'm a parent of a student at Santa Rosa French-American Charter School. She will soon be headed to middle school, and we would love her to continue French immersion 7th and 8th grade to extend her education at SRFAX. Currently, a program does not exist that is accredited for her to do this in our district or even in our county. or even in our county. We deeply feel that SRCS has offered us such a great opportunity for a French immersion elementary school, that the development of a middle school option and hopefully a high school option will materialize with the same high-quality, caring, inclusive, diverse, and global standard that she has encountered for the past six years. We, as parents, understand that such a large endeavor does not happen without much hard work and dedication, and I want to thank the board for their consideration opening this program for our students.
Thank you. Next is Kay Colgrove. Is this Kristen Colgrove?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kristen Colgrove. I'm the office manager at Hidden Valley Elementary School and a member of CSEA 75. At the beginning of every school year, the classified and certificated staff of Santa Rosa City Schools are given the task of completing mandated reporter training, as well as several other trainings. We receive emails in July with the expectation of having these trainings completed by the start of the school year. This year, the certificated staff negotiated four extra hours of pay to complete the trainings outside their normal hours. This pay was extended to all certificated staff regardless of whether they did the trainings on time or ended up doing them after the deadline. The classified staff, excuse me, the classified union feels that we should have been extended the same opportunity, and therefore notified the district of this request. As of today, I'm told there has been no response to this request. Both certificated and classified staff have workdays prior to students showing up for the first day of school. This affords the time for these trainings to be completed. I understand that many would prefer to concentrate on getting their classrooms ready, getting their office organized, or registering new students, but as a requirement of employment, these trainings should be completed on time. For the certificated staff to negotiate and be granted extra compensation to do these trainings is admirable, but this is unfair and inequitable to not automatically extend this to your classified employees. Certificated employees who met the deadline will still be compensated for the extra time regardless of when they completed their trainings. It is also worth mentioning that substitutes must complete the mandated reporter training prior to being eligible to sub, with no exceptions granted. There is no compensation whatsoever for them to complete this, but the requirement is there nonetheless. The lack of equity between the certificated employees and the classified employees is glaring at times, and this is just one of those situations. If my numbers are correct, a teacher will make an extra $209.56 to complete trainings that are required to retain employment in the district, but the same opportunity is not automatically extended to a classified employee who would make far less than this based on their hourly wage. I'm curious as to why the district has not responded to our request, and more importantly, why we even have to ask. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Meredith B. Meredith, would you please state your full name?
Yes, it's Meredith Brand. I, like Scott and Ben and Melissa, am a parent with children at the Santa Rosa French American Charter School. I would like to thank the board and the school district who was brave enough nearly a decade ago to take on the charter of the Santa Rosa French American Charter School to make it what it is. We were so successful, we maxed out on campus. We had to make the unfortunate decision a couple of years ago to cap the school at 6th grade instead of 7th and 8th, which we initially started, or that was the plan, was to have up to 8th grades on campus. Since we are so successful, we have TK through 6 currently at the previously Doyle Park Elementary School campus. I realize that, given building codes, et cetera, we cannot get the 7th and 8th grade back on campus. It would be wonderful to keep within the district a 7th and 8th grade immersion option at another campus, be it, I think I've heard Slater, or some other locations. And then, as Melissa said, in the future, hopefully, immersion option for high school as well. I have a daughter who will be graduating 6th grade. I think it may be a little too soon to assume that this could be achieved for the fall 2022 year, but we would fully be in support of having her go ahead and go forward with that decision if it was kept within the district. Currently, we have had to make the decision to enroll her outside of the district for the best middle school option. Thank you. I appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you. And just a reminder, this is public comment on items that are not coming up on the agenda. Two-minute time limit. Next is Margaret Stevens.
Hi, I'll keep it short. I'm with Santa Rosa French American Charter School also. As you can probably guess, I want the 7th and 8th grade option, so if you could please consider that, that would be great. I think the other people have covered the reasons why pretty well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Next is Deanna Oliveras.
Hello, I see the big smiles on your guys' faces because you're my voice again first time this year. You know, there's a lot for me to say. I always have to decide on what to say during public comment. I think you've guys have heard my voice one or two times a month for the last two years, and what I have to say tonight is to the parents. I love that there's over 100 people on, but I want to remind parents that you can't just get upset about one item and jump on and, you know, tell them how you feel and hope that you get anywhere. You have to put in the time. You have to come every month. You have to be persistent. You have to write letters. You have to tell them how you feel. You have to talk to your site representative, like your principal. You need to find out who your trustee is. Most of these people right here on the board, someone voted them in. Which one is in your trustee area? If they're not doing what you want them to do, there are two seats up for grabs this year. Are you in the area? Do you know someone that would be good on the school board? You have to really start educating yourself, and I think a lot of parents are, you know, they wait too long to get involved, and they get upset, and you really need to start educating yourself. Find out who endorsed the people that are in your district with the new map and county lines. A lot of people I know email this board a lot and very rarely get a reply, so go to their website. There's a formal complaint handbook that's dated 2018, and there's policy and procedure to do a formal complaint, so you can hold them accountable, whether it's instructional aid, or them not hearing you, or you asking for instructional minutes. So know your rights and keep fighting for our children, and please help me get school choice on the ballot for 2022, because that's the only way we can defeat the teachers' unions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Viviana Pisani.
Good evening. My name is Viviana Pisani. I am a mother of a 1st grader in the Santa Rosa French American Charter School. I was born in Medellin, Colombia, in South America, and I had the opportunity to study my professional career of winemaker in France for a period of six years. So it became natural to me to think about the French American Charter School to combine two different philosophies of living and to have a global mindset for my kids growing up in Sonoma County. I feel like we are very privileged to have our kids enjoying multicultural education with kids from all over the world and different cultures, and I really would like to see the opportunity that my kids could finish on 8th grade at the district of Santa Rosa School. So I am supporting Ben, the president of the PAF. I'm a member of the PAF as well, and all the other parents that have speak, pleading to all of you to support our desire to continue their education on accredited American and French education. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Pam Karbowski.
Good evening. Real quick, I want to talk about substitute teachers, and I want to make sure this is the time. Yes, okay. So I am concerned that we are losing applicants to be substitute teachers based on the paperwork and amount of time that it takes to get cleared in our district. I know of two student teachers who are frustrated with the process. One has decided not to continue applying in our district and instead is already subbing in the Roner Park Kattati district because it was a much easier and quicker process. Another student teacher said that she has to wait until January 25th to take the induction meeting, and then she can get the paperwork to apply. I know we are in dire need of substitute teachers, and I am hoping that we can look into making the process a little bit quicker so we don't miss out on qualified applicants. I have two friends that are interested in subbing, and I would hate to recommend them to Santa Rosa City Schools, but then to lose them to different districts when they see how long the process takes. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Karen Wagner.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to say I'm one of the special ed assistants for Santa Rosa City Schools, and as a parent who is raising children, I felt that this was a good career choice for me. I was able to be there at home with them on the weekends and holidays and all that. In my 24 years of doing this, what I've found is it's like one of the heart jobs that we do in our life, you know, and I'm speaking from the heart. And it is so wonderful to be able to work side by side with these kiddos and see how we can help them. So as we're looking for special ed assistants in our, you know, district, you know, if you ever have a inkling that you think you might like to do this, it's really a wonderful opportunity. So, you know, think about it. It's really good. So, I don't know, if I didn't like it, I wouldn't have been here this long. So anyways, if you are looking for some good, and you want to work with kids, special ed is where it's at. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Wagner. Next is Sheila Walker.
Good evening to everyone, President Sheffield, board members, Superintendent Trinell, and the community. I just wanted to, luckily, I got on right after the speaker before me, and I had spoken recently with President Sheffield about how we can support one another as parents of the district and spread the word on these different opportunities, whether it's special education, where they need assistance, substitute teaching, and looking at a way, like we have a lot of people on tonight for an item, but how we can use our parents' groups at our schools to further outreach and talk about, like, getting people at our schools in a positive way about how really we have so many people who can reach out to others. So just wanted to put that out there, that we have a lot of people listening, so how can we do something where we're all in agreement that we want to have as many people on campus for the safety of our students and the staff? So that's really important. The other thing I wanted to add on, there was a speaker earlier that mentioned that they had some information for everyone else listening in the community, especially the parents, is that it's absolutely critical to participate and be involved. We have a board of seven who I know are working extremely hard, and we really are thankful for that and thankful for everyone keeping our schools open at this point, but we have seven board members and only two of them have kids in school. So while I'm very appreciative of everyone, it's been an agonizing two years for parents and children, and I think it's just really important that people consider that we'll have, I think it's three openings next year for the school board, and if anyone would like some information on that, please go to the website and look it up. Thank you.
Thank you. And President Sheffield, there are no other hands raised.
Thank you. And thank you to the public for your comments and sharing your concerns and suggestions. You are our school community, and your input is really important to us. I'm just wondering, before we move on to reports, Superintendent Trinell, is there a way we can link the MLK virtual event to the district website, something that we can get out as well?
Absolutely. The link sent to me.
Perfect. All right, we're going to move on to our D items, reports. D1, California School Employees Association, Santa Rosa 75. Do we have a representative, or is President Mary Lehman here to give a report?
Could the representatives for CSEA, please raise your hand. I've not seen anyone in the attendees. Okay, and it looks like Ms. Tammy Afonso's here, and I also see somebody else. Oh, there we go. Okay, I am bringing them over now.
Hello, Tammy, and somebody else. Welcome. Happy New Year. I think we have you on mute, Tammy.
Well, I got the picture and then forgot the voice. Thank you. Happy New Year to you. So I'm here this evening to give some good news to the school board. Recently, in our December chapter meeting, we voted in a new president for our chapter, and part of what I'll do is introduce her in a moment. I want to thank the school board and Superintendent Trinell and Assistant Superintendent, I just totally do blank, Michael. I apologize, Michael Shepherd, for working closely with me on CSEA items and the resolutions that we have made over the last couple of years. It has been a wonder experience as I finish my second round, this time as the interim president, while we sought out a new president. And so this evening, I would like to introduce you to our new president, Mary Lehman. And so now I'll let Mary speak. Thank you, everyone.
And Mary, it looks like you are also on mute. We cannot hear you yet. Always technical issues.
Okay, there we go.
There you are.
Okay, I want to express our sincere appreciation for the more than 20 years Tammy has been the CSEA 75 president or on the executive board representing our members. If this was not a Zoom meeting, I would ask for applause and a standing ovation on her behalf. We cannot thank you enough, Tammy, for all you have done. It is the CSEA labor relations system that secures reasonable hours, fair wages, and improves working conditions. Our executive board with Tammy has established over the years the spirit of cooperation, good faith, and fair dealings with our employer, Santa Rosa City School. I will be working together with the executive board and my fellow classified staff to learn this new role to support our welfare. My first duty as president was to give the district our CSEA 75 openers for the 2223 school year. I look forward to my first negotiations with the district. I'm excited and nervous about taking on this challenge, but if we all work together, we can accomplish what we need. I have been a technology assistant for Santa Rosa City Schools since 2000. I've been tech support at each of the district's elementary, middle, and high schools sometime or another during the academic year or during their summer school programs. Currently, I am technology assistant for all of the district offices, Abraham Lincoln Elementary School, Santa Rosa French American Charter School, Ridgway, and LCL and High School. There are seven technology assistants for 24 schools. Yes, we are short-staffed and underpaid, and we are constantly challenged by advances in technology now exacerbated by the impact of COVID. And we are constantly challenged by advances in technology now exacerbated by the impact of COVID. I am part of this district's school family. My husband and I are the parents of three Montgomery High School graduates. From twenty, two thousand and four to two thousand and seventeen, I was Montgomery High School's girls tennis coach. I've been the Montgomery badminton coach since two thousand and five. I will be training a new coach this month in order to have time for this new job. We have two grandchildren now, one from each daughter. They drive, delivered during COVID. My husband and I enjoy playing tennis, hiking, and rafting. Again, I'm looking forward to working with all of you. Thank you for the welcome.
Thank you, Mary. Welcome. Congratulations. And thank you, Tammy. You're amazing. I know you're not going away. So we're looking forward to working with, with, with you, Mary, and Tammy into the new year.
I will be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
President Sheffield, I'm sorry, I just have to interject. Having had a personal relationship, working relationship with both President Alfonso and President-elect, new President Mary Lehman. These women have been phenomenal. Their patience, their compassion, their empathy, their knowledge, intelligence, incredible. I was, Mary was the coach, as she talked about, and technology assistant the entire time I was at Montgomery, and she just brought a huge capacity, calm, and patience. And Tammy sat with me many, many times to work on things again with patience and calm. And I thank you both and truly, thank you.
Both valuable assets to the district. Moving on to D two, Santa Rosa Teachers Association. I know we had President Catherine Howell.
Good evening, I am.
Welcome. Happy New Year.
Thank you. Happy New Year. And good evening, President Sheffield. First time saying that in a report. Superintendent Trinell, members of the board. First, congratulations to new President Lehman. Great news for CSEA. And I want to start with some thank yous. I want to start with saying thank you to Superintendent Trinell and the cabinet for the absolute lightning fast reaction to a request for KN ninety five masks at all of our school sites for January third. We had, you know, a few little blips, but for the most part, every single educator had an KN ninety five mask, if not Monday, absolutely certainly by Tuesday morning, January the fourth, and we know that supplies are, are here and on the way so that our teachers can continue to get KN ninety five masks for, you know, the rest of the school year if that's necessary. I'm going to knock on wood for that one, right? And then I want to say thank you. I understand that the portable CO2 monitors went out today or going out to the school sites. While the permanent installation is still ongoing, it's great, very comforting to have these portable ones on our campuses so that we can identify rooms on our school sites that need better ventilation, better air circulation. As we all know, it's so important right now with our airborne Omicron variant that we're able to look at the air quality in our classrooms. So thank you for that. And thank you this evening for the updates that you're making to the COVID safety handbook. We're very thankful for the pool testing. It's very welcome and perhaps overdue even, but welcome nonetheless to get the pool testing underway, including staff and teachers in the pool. It's going to go a long ways towards making people more confident about, you know, who, who's sick at school and who is not. We know that masking and testing and limits on the group size are really so important so that we can try to keep people healthy while they're at school. And, you know, we want to keep the schools open to, to hark back and echo President Sheffield from earlier. You know, we're tired, we're exhausted, we're stressed, we're, you know, all of those things are so true about everyone, but so, so true about teachers right now. We are standing firm, CTA and SRTA are both standing firm with our idea that priority number one is keep the schools open. And that's what our teachers are doing. Of course, we are all asking also, what is the tipping point, right? At what point is there not, simply not enough adults to safely keep our kids in school? We had about thirteen percent of our certificated educators out today, thirty two unfilled absences, certificated absences. You know, lots of administrators from all over from district office, we know that they are giving time to the classrooms every day. And teachers are still giving up prep time. The splitting of classes is still going on where students are being split up and sent to different classrooms during the day, which the net result of that, of course, is that the, you know, more kids in a room, which is not a great idea right now, but also more students in the room for each teacher. And disruptions to the curriculum. So you know, it's not sustainable. We don't have a solution. But just, you know, just, it's one of those things. We want schools to be open, but at some point, you know, how do we decide? How do we prepare for when there just simply won't be enough healthy teachers to come to school today, right? And lack of substitutes is still a problem. Pam Karbowski touched on it in her comment earlier. And, you know, streamline that process, but we're just asking, you know, be a substitute, step up, substitute. I saw a thing today, it was a TikTok. I'm not super proud of the fact that I saw TikTok, but it said, you know, maybe substitute teaching should be a little bit like jury duty. And every community member gets a chance, right? I don't think we're there yet. I don't think we need to go quite that far. But, you know, we do need to come up with just an appeal. I am asking every single person listening right now, be a substitute at Santa Rosa City Schools because we are desperately in need of you and we want the kids to be in school. And we won't be able to do that if we don't have trusted adults to come in and take our place when we inevitably are going to be out on isolation or quarantine for COVID. So thank you all for the tough decisions that you're going to have to make tonight and have made about COVID in the past very nearly two years now. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, President Howell. And thank you so much to teachers out there. As I said before, these are really dark days ahead and we want to give you all the support that you need. We're there for you. All right, moving on to item D three, our superintendent report. Over to you.
Good evening. Thank you, Board President Sheffield, members of the board, staff, and our community. I have a more somber gratitude attitude today as we are in day ninety three of school as of today. Please know that it is not lost that what we are experiencing right now is very serious. And please know that I am taking what we're experiencing very seriously. It's also important to try and find the positive and continue to find the, the shining lights that are happening in our schools every day. And so you will continue to see me trying to maintain that positive foot forward. I want to speak a little bit. I have quite a few things to share tonight, so please bear with me. First is about schools staying safe and open. I really appreciate hearing from our staff and our community, and we are trying to do everything we can. We have received some questions related to whether we are closing schools and or transitioning back to distance learning. So I just want to share a little bit of information, hopefully to clarify sort of the whys and the why nots. We are certainly committed, as you've heard multiple times this evening already, that we are committed to keeping schools open and safe. Unlike last year, the rules for offering virtual instruction are different this year. Current California law does not allow schools to offer distance learning this year. Virtual learning can only be offered through independent study and families must choose to participate in that program. The law specifically states students may not be required to enroll in independent study. Despite the COVID nineteen surge we are experiencing in the absence of a state or local health order, school districts do not have the explicit legal authority to shift to virtual learning outside of independent study. If a district does not have sufficient staff to open schools due to the impacts of COVID nineteen, the district must have a plan to offer independent study and demonstrate that they have exhausted all of their staffing options by consulting with the county office of education and the state superintendent of public instruction first. If a district does decide to, to close completely, existing law does allow a district to utilize built-in emergency days to shut down if they are included in collective bargaining agreements. We in Santa Rosa City Schools have two emergency days built into our calendar, which would not make a huge impact if we were to close for two days. Hence, and potential, if we closed further, we would have to extend the school year. We're going to talk in a little bit about the recent order about indoor and outdoor events during the COVID nineteen board item tonight. So I'll reserve some of our thinking around the messaging from yesterday and actually some of the advocacy that we are working on with the county to push back a little bit. So what are we doing to provide additional support? First, I really need to take a moment to recognize all of our staff who continue to go above and beyond, including over winter break, as well as working nights and weekends, people who should be taking a well-deserved rest, but ultimately will do what it takes to ensure our schools are safe and ready for students and staff. I want to talk a little bit about the test kits for students. You may have seen in the paper and heard that there were some other districts who received test kits and distributed those before winter break or during winter break, at least the first week. Those districts were part, in part, some of those districts were part of a pilot that was conducted by the state. Other districts received an invitation to order tests in advance of winter break. This was unbeknownst to us, and we did not learn of the test distribution until we saw it in the media. We were offered tests during the second week of winter break. Those tests were allocated based on the county, county's numbers on area codes that we're seeing higher cases. The schools within those vicinities were reached out to, and we were able to distribute all of the tests that we did receive. We also then received over fifteen thousand more tests as of Wednesday last week, which many of you know, we then began the process of distributing as of last Friday and is ongoing. We are still working with some students and families who did not receive a test, either because they weren't present or for other reasons. I want everyone to know that we're actually in the process of ordering eighteen thousand boxes of test kits, same ones that we were distributing last week. Each test kit has two tests in them. We are working on the distribution and district use plan for these tests. I want to talk about KN ninety five masks. We put in an order and we just received over two hundred thousand KN ninety five masks to be available. In addition, we learned today that the Sonoma County Office of Education is providing us a combination of a little over fifty thousand KN ninety five and N ninety five masks, enough for three per student and three per staff. We are working on our plan for distribution and will communicate as soon as possible. The cost of our purchases, such as test kits and masks, adds up to approximately five hundred thousand dollars, which we have used code, excuse me, COVID funds to pay for. I want to talk a little bit about outdoor eating spaces. We are looking at a combination, as we've heard, especially during rainy day recess, lunch recess, et cetera. We are looking at a combination of small pop-up tents or larger tents that the Division of State Architects or DSA is allowing without building code violations. So we are looking at the potential purchase of those in the immediate future to assist with outdoor eating to minimize exposure during lunch. Two more things that I want to mention here that are directly related to safe schools and staying open. We are now looking at rehiring a COVID coordinator. Steve Mazera, who has been our right hand in this work, has been doing an amazing job. And of course, like many people, we anticipated that things would begin to slow down, hence that we would not need the additional staffing. Given what is currently happening, however, we are going to move forward with the hiring of a COVID coordinator. So there will be a posting about that, and we're actually looking at some potential ways to partner with county health so that we have individuals connected who are connected to all facets of the work. But be look, be on the lookout for that posting. Lastly, the governor's temporary executive order intended to address school staffing shortages. You may have seen this and we can certainly provide it and make sure it's available to you. But there are some additional concessions so that we have the opportunity for a more efficient and effective, quick hiring of additional substitutes and issuing a thirty day emergency credential for those individuals who have an undergraduate degree from a regionally accredited college or university and pass a criminal background check. There are some additional concessions such as lengthening the number of days that a single substitute can work. And we will, we will share all of those specifics in our next communication. Outside of that, I want to transition to some other information that I want to be sure that our community is aware of. First, I just want to take a moment to thank both, both of our labor groups, both CSEA and SRTA. In these trying times, we have had to collaborate and work closely more than ever to ensure that we are on the same page, that we are listening, that we are taking action, and that we are keeping schools open. We are looking at scheduling, I am looking at scheduling opportunities to visit schools and meet with parent groups on this side of the school year in two thousand and twenty two. These will be regularly scheduled parent meetings that the schools may be offering over the next few months so that I can participate and hear parents in the conversations that are naturally going on at schools. I want to remind everyone that we have our youth truth survey going on. We invite our families to provide valuable feedback to us as a district about our schools through the youth truth survey. This was sent to families via the contact information we have on file. If a family did not receive the survey, it can be found on our website on the front page. It may be scrolling, so wait for it or use the arrows. And we are collecting responses until the end of January. We're excited to begin the start of our school site reports, which also includes PTAs, PTOs, or the like, giving them an opportunity to provide some talking points in a report about their school's activities. Sites will be identifying and celebrating a student, a classified employee, and a certificated employee during their night of reporting. And principals will be presenting a report to the board and the community that highlights the goals, the, the site goals, I should say, the overview of staff, student demographics, cycle of inquiry, which is an ongoing process of reflection of practice and assessing outcomes, site goal data analysis, stakeholder engagement, site-specific initiatives, and reflection and learning. With that, my final comment for my report is just a reminder that we have no school this coming Monday, January seventeen, in observe, in observance of the Dr. King holiday and no school on Thursday, January twenty seven, due to our in-district professional development day for staff. And woo, with that, I hand it back over to you, President Sheffield.
Thank you, Superintendent Trinell. We're going to pause for a moment to do an interpreter switch. And just let me know as we are ready to go back.
Thank you, President Sheffield.
Thank you, President Sheffield.
Muy buenas noches probando.
A one moment, I still have to put you into the channel. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are good to go. Thank you so much.
All right, welcome back. Um, we are on agenda item D four, uh, the board president report. And I do have just a brief report, um. Earlier this week on Monday, there was a meeting of the county committee on school district reorganization. Um, we did cabinet um, um, reshuffling, sort of. Um, we reelected um, Jeanie Fernandez as chair and we elected Frank Pew. Um, as the vice chair. Um, the committee also voted to align county school district trustee areas with the county's newly drawn supervisory lines. And we also discussed um, a petition from West County um, Union High School District. For transit to by trustee area election system. Um, and we may be able to provide some assistance um, for West County since we have gone through this process ourselves. That's all I have to report. Board member reports. Um, how I see board member hands going up, we have uh, trustee Fong, your hand shot up first and then. Um, and then Vice President McCormick. So go ahead, Lori. Oh, did we lose her?
Very quickly, I just wanted to let you know that I was, I don't think I told you this. Yet, but I was elected recently, actually just started January first. Elected as the API Asian Pacific Islander. Um, API School Board Member Association, so it's like a group association of the California School Board Association, like a subset. So I am their new president and our goal is to um. Center and pay attention to what is happening to the um, AAPI students in California. Um, that this is not a monolithic group at all and and there's a lot of need and a lot of attention. Hasn't usually been paid because a lot of the stories are invisible. So that is my work for the year.
Congratulations. Also, I know you 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 brought us to um, uh, the gathering at the CSBA conference. So we got a um, a chance to see a little bit of the work being done. Congratulations. What a great honor and and position.
So of course, my work here with this board and Santa Rosa City Schools is primary as always, but. That is part of my ongoing work for students. Thank you.
Awesome. And um, VP Coach McCormick.
Um, congratulations Director Fong. And I'm so glad that you are stepping up in leadership there. And um, I just have a couple of things. Uh, one is. Uh, I'm on the board of managers for the North Coast section for athletics. And we have a meeting coming up later in January. And I just want to let you know that I go to those, we usually have three meetings or so a year. Um, but I'm sure this one will be interesting in the light of the situation that we're in with COVID. Um, finishing up winter sports and moving into spring sports. So um, after that meeting, I will report back. Um, I'm also the president of our Made in Santa Rosa Foundation. And we have some great momentum going. We are, we've solidified it, our executive board. Um, we're finalizing our overall um, board membership right now. And we'll do a formal report on that. Um, I don't know, in the next couple of months or something. Um, so some exciting movement on that as well. And then um, the last, I would just like to say, um, and I know uh, people have heard this, but I don't think they've heard it enough. Um, I just want to say to all of our staff. Um, all of our teachers, all of our volunteers, um. Just a huge thank you. Um, the strain of this going into year three is incredible. Um, and it's very hard to be an educator and a service to your community right now. And so I just want you to know that um, you are making a difference and um, you need to take care of yourselves. Um, because our children need you, our families need you, um, this district needs you. So thank you for the work that you're doing. Thank you for the continued work that you're doing. Thank you for being fierce in the face of adversity. Um, and I just wanted to publicly say that because it's very hard right now. Um, so I appreciate it and and that goes all the way up. Uh, the chain to cabinet and district office. Everybody is involved in making this district run every day. Um, and then lastly, I want to say that um, I am just a huge, huge supporter. Of keeping our schools open. I just wanted to say that publicly. I know that's what we're committed to and we're doing everything in our power. Um, to follow guidelines with the changing rules from day to day, from the county, the city, the state. Um, all the way up and um, I just feel like it is that we do have in light of the past. Almost three years now, we do have um. Uh, online and remote options now for um, our students and families that feel like it is not safe. To be on campus. Um, but I very strongly believe we need to keep our schools open. Um, and that we need to continue to move forward. Um. This is unfortunately our new normal, I think, and it's obviously not going away soon. Um, and I think every winter and spring, it's going to be tough. Um, so we just need to keep keep getting better at this and commit to keeping our schools. Open and safe um, for our uh, children that we serve, our families that we serve and employees. Um, of this district. So I just wanted to say that and I'm glad that schools are open right now. So that's it.
Thank you so much, Director McCormick. Um, Director Manieri.
Thank you, President Sheffield. Um, I just wanted to quickly share. Um, that I'm I'm really excited that in a couple of weeks, I will be participating um, in the LC Allen High School College and Career Fair. So they're going to have an entire week of having speakers come into classrooms. And talk about um, college and career, and then they're going to have a really amazing career fair on Friday, the twenty eighth on campus and. I'm just really excited to be a part of that. Um, and um. I I haven't stepped on campus, um, especially LC Allen in a really long time, and so I just, it's. Something I'm really looking forward to in the next couple of weeks. Um, and also just wanted to really emphasize the message that President Howell from SRT shared with us. Um, about substitute teachers and especially in light of the executive order that was just given yesterday. Um, I, if I could be a substitute teacher, if I could leave my job for some time and and go to that. Um, I would do it in a heartbeat. Um, and so I just want to call anybody who has that um, that. That want, that interest, that um, care for our kids and for our community to. Um, to consider being a substitute teacher and and I hope that this executive order will make it easier. And will make it more flexible um, for folks to to participate in this. So I just really wanted to emphasize that message. Um, and and likewise, thank you to all of our staff and to all of our educators and to all of our students. Um, I've had a really um, impactful few days talking to um, specifically middle schoolers about what's going on on their campuses and. And so I just, I really want to also thank our students for hanging in there and for doing what they can. For their families and for their community. Um, so I just, I just want to um, share my appreciation for. Um, everyone doing what they can to keep our schools open and to keep our kids safe.
Thank you, Director Manieri, and thank you for bringing up the um, the substitute. Possibilities and potentials. I know in the back of my head, I'm trying to figure out, can I stretch myself any thinner? And and throw myself into the pool. Um, I sigh, maybe, um. Um, but it would be a great opportunity for those who who have the um, the means, the ability to 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 step up in this time of need. Um, do other board members have reports or announcements they want to make at this time? Seeing none, moving on to item D six, CSBA report. Any, well, wait, okay, we don't have CSBA report at this time.
Uh, I'm just gonna say something quickly, you know. So uh, so my application has been submitted and we're still waiting to hear if I've been selected as the CSBA delegate. So uh, no report. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, moving on to our E items, the action discussion items. Moving on to item E one. Action item, public board meeting via teleconference per AB. Uh, three sixty one, my speaker Superintendent Trunell.
Yes, thank you, Board President Sheffield, members of the board, staff and community. So this is the item bringing forward the request uh, for the board to consider. A continuance of board meetings to be held virtually. Um, at the last board, regular board meeting, I believe there was a request, or perhaps it was December fifteen. Uh, there was a request to consider what would it take? If we had to meet in person, um, and we had to do that in district versus at city hall. Uh, which is where we have typically conducted our meetings in person. So. Um, a team of staff um, over several days has been planning. Uh, for what that potentially could look like. Um, and today we got to sort of practice to a degree. Uh, what the equipment would be needed and sound quality, video quality. What I can share with the board, um, if the board were to to so choose sometime in the future. Uh, to hold a board meeting in district versus at city hall. Um, what, what we are estimating is that it would be about one point five hours, so an hour and a half. For setup um, in a space um, at um, at one of our campuses. We did use. Montgomery today as our test pilot. Um, and in their arts um, auditorium. Um, and it would take obviously a bit longer for take down of the equipment because we would also then be cleaning the space. Uh, afterwards, because students use the space daily. Um, and then with current indoor event mandates. Um, we would not be able to have more than fifty people in the space in person. At least up until right now, February eleventh. Um, and so given the number of board members and staff. Um, that would need to be present in the room. Um, including those who would need to monitor the additional equipment. To allow for a hybrid opportunity to offer a Zoom option to those who want to attend virtually. This leaves approximately room for twenty five attendees from the public. With social distancing spacing. So we literally went like every three seats. Um, just to give some semblance of uh, distancing. Currently, the city where we have typically met uh, ha, is allowing seventeen public attendees. So I did want to alert the board to that as was requested. Um, and then we would need to um, purchase roughly about fifteen thousand dollars in additional equipment. Um, to ensure that video and audio equipment is of high quality and clear. Um, and so with those things, uh, President Sheffield. For the board's consideration in the request to consider a continuance of board meetings virtually. And I hand it back to you.
Thank you Superintendent Trunell. Okay, bringing it back to the board for questions, clarifying questions. It looks like um. Uh, Director De La Cruz has her hand raised.
Thank you so much Superintendent and and um, all to all the staff who. Tried this out. Um, I know one of the other questions that we raised as a board was. What is the data that shows us the difference between the possibility of as we have tonight, a hundred and fifty three? Hundred and thirty two, um, people participating with us versus what would happen and like. Ha, has that, is that an average that is typical during COVID and what are those numbers as compared to? The folks who used to come to board meetings regularly, like is, do we actually see? More people coming on Zoom? Have we heard from anyone in the public? Um, beyond the folks who have come to the board in the past. Um, to urge us to go in person about whether or not Zoom is actually um. More flexible for parents during dinnertime, et cetera, to join our board meetings. So just. Would love to hear a little bit about that data, if that, if that analysis was done yet. And if not, I'm okay. I just wanted to reiterate that question and that kind of. You know, that analysis to inform our decision here.
Thank you. I don't have hard numbers for you. But generally speaking, we typically have now more participants. Than we've had in person when we were holding in person meetings. And because they were in person, people would come and they would leave, and so there's always a fluctuation. Of the number of people in the room because of the very point that you just made. Director De La Cruz, that people have families or they have other obligations in the evening. So they want to come um, listen in or give their uh, public comment and then leave. So those numbers in person fluctuate. What we're seeing is that more participants and attendees are staying with us. Through the night, barring maybe not towards the very late end. But are staying with us through the conversation because they can multitask, take care of their families, their children, et cetera. While joining us during this call.
Other questions from uh, the board? Okay, no questions at this time. Let's go to public comments. We have hands, participants.
If there are any members of the public would like to comment on item E one, please raise your hands now. There are no hands raised.
All right, back to the board. Uh, further discussion, questions or emotion? I see Director McCormick's hand.
Um, I'd just like to make a motion that we uh, approve the public board meetings via teleconference per AB three sixty one.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion from Director McCormick, uh, second from Director Medina. Ready for a vote?
Director.
Director Fong, Director Fong has her hand up.
Oh, yes.
I just have a another little PS comment. Um, I love that more people are able to participate because they don't have to be there in person, sitting there for hours, waiting for an item. Uh, they just could be home doing what they want to do as as Superintendent Trunell pointed out. I also think it's important for us to be able, to be there in person so that if people want to come down. And see us in person as their elective school board officials, that's also very important. But I'm really balancing this with the bandwidth that we have. And the bandwidth that it really is taking a toll on on uh, district administrations, so um. And Omicron. So at this point, let's continue this. I know we are doing this almost every other week per um, state law, so. Let's keep an eye on this and thank you, uh, Superintendent Trunell for that information in terms of like more quantitative data. And how it is, but of course, we do want to be back in public and be available to public in person. And some kind of hybrid would be really great to continue that where people can also stay home and be able to participate. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Director Fong. Um, I see um, Director Flores' hand raised as well.
Yeah, thank the uh, President Sheffield. So you know, I I usually am the uh, so no vote on this item, you know. Uh, week after week. Uh, but I do have to say that I I second um, Director's uh, Fong's idea. And in which we need to start thinking about a hybrid model. That way we can uh, be present for our constituents, right? I mean, that's why we're elected to be there. Uh, not having that ability to to talk to your, you know, elected uh, officials. It's it's a little bit um. Weird. It's it's a little bit weird. Having said that, you know, I also see that this peak has been. A huge impact schoolwide, right? Our systems are at a standstill at this point, so I think I'm taking that into account when I vote today. Just letting you know, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Flores. All right, well, we have, I think we're ready for a vote, Medina.
Thank you, President Sheffield. So just to confirm, we had the call for the motion by Director McCormick and the second by Director Medina. Thank you. Director Beard. Director McCormick.
Hi.
Director Medina.
Hi.
Director Manieri.
Hi.
Director De La Cruz.
Hi.
Director Fong.
Hi.
Director Flores.
Hi.
President Sheffield.
Hi. All right, we have passed. Item E one, we are moving on to E two. This is an action item, adoption of twenty twenty-two revised board meeting calendar, Superintendent Truenell.
Yes, thank you so much, and I do have a friendly amendment. I don't know how many times I've looked at this calendar and even still, there is further consideration. As. Board bylaws do allow for two meetings in March. Initially, the second meeting in March of this calendar was not included. Because the fourth Wednesday of that month falls during spring break. However, I would like to propose to the board an amendment to the calendar. Provided that for the month of March, we would also include March thirtieth. Which does then provide the opportunity to have two meetings in March since there are five weeks this year. So the amendment would be to request the board's approval of this revised calendar, given all considerations. With the inclusion of March thirtieth as the second meeting in March. And with that, I do hand it back to you, President Sheffield.
All right, questions from the board? Not seeing any hands raised. Go to public comment on the calendar.
If there are members of the public would like to comment on item E two, please raise your hands at this time. There are no hands raised.
All right, bringing it back to the board for discussion, for the questions or a motion. With the amendment, seeking an amendment to approve a revised calendar with consideration for March thirtieth. As a March, a second March meeting. Questions, comments, motion? Trustee Medina has made the motion.
Second.
Seconded by trustee De La Cruz. Further questions, looks like we're ready for a vote.
Director Beard.
Hi.
Director Medina.
Hi.
Director De La Cruz.
Hi.
Director Manieri.
Hi.
Director Fong.
Hi.
Director McCormick.
Hi.
Director Flores.
Hi.
President Sheffield.
Hi. All right, motion passes. Moving on to item E three, another action item, board communication norms to review. I will be presenting. For the public, we have a set of norms and policies that are designed to help guide the board. During interactions with one another or with the superintendent and her staff. Can we put these up on the screen? I don't know if we have that available. Just for the public to see. Well, you know, these norms, they're centered around mutual respect and honesty, integrity. And compassion and empathy. And the idea is that hopefully we will all sign an agreement to these norms. But I guess at this time, we don't have them up on the screen, maybe I'll just go over really quickly. Communication norms with the board, each other and the superintendent. Is to assume positive intentions and be open-minded, to listen to and understand one another. To respect confidentiality, to be honest and respectful. Encourage and honor inquiry. Commit to direct communication to fill gaps and be forthcoming with information. Be timely and responsive with communication. To fact-check communication. To learn, share and respect each other's communication style. And respect other perspectives, actions and opinions. There we go on the screen. I'm on the second halfway down communication during problem solving and conflict resolution. And again, these are really around. Just mutual respect, being civil. Addressing conflicts as soon as possible in an honest and respectful manner. Seek to resolve issues at the lowest possible level and commit to moving forward as. A collaborative governance team. Lean in and embrace conflict and work towards resolution. To voice concerns in deliberations and accept final outcome. Be compassionate and empathetic. And be at cause in our words and actions. And the desire is for all of us to sign on to these norms. Spot on the bottom for us to put add our signatures. So I guess at this time, does the board have any questions about this document? Or our communication norms? I am not seeing any, but let's leave this up for a moment. And. And go to public comment.
So if there are any members of the public who would like to comment on item E three, please raise your hands at this time. And Linda Cade would like to comment.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
I was curious who created this document.
I think this was, the last time that I saw this was before the, before the pandemic. I think is when we started this, so it was a, it was a work of the board at the time. We've made some adjustments, modifications, as I recall. But the, you know, the, I think the intent of this document came before my time on the board. But I think that for the whole, we worked on this through, I think we might have had some type of retreat or workshop. To work out the wording. But again, I think there was agreement and has been agreement with this current board about the importance of these norms. And I know I'm not supposed to respond, I should have included that, but I did want to, I wanted to put that out there for the public.
President Sheffield, there are no other hands raised.
Great, all right, I'm gonna bring that back to the board for discussion. Further questions on this document or a motion?
My hand is raised, President Sheffield.
Thank you, we can close this now, I think, so I can see people's hands raised. Okay, thank you, Director De La Cruz.
Sure, so I think one of the things, especially in equity-centered work that we talk about is understanding. The difference between intent and impact. And I really love the part that says assume positive intentions, but I think it also requires us to understand that. Sometimes intentions and impact don't necessarily align and that there's still space for us to to understand impact. Despite our positive intentions or despite assuming somebody else has positive intentions. And so that that really allows us some some additional space to grow into and and to recognize that. And I think. The other thing that I just, that is that, you know, there's, there is a sense that we lean into discomfort. And that discomfort means that we're growing and learning and changing. And so I would love to figure out how to, you know, kind of put those those values into this. Into this document, because I do think that they are reflective of the kind of board that we are. And the capacity that we have, you know, to be civil and engage with each other and loving. And also understand impact and also, you know, be in those growth spaces of discomfort.
I, I, I love the idea of, you know, us sitting down the 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 board as it stands. And sort of address this, these norms, maybe annually as we have our retreat. Modify, adjust. Other questions, I think, Director Fong, did you have your hand raised?
I just wanted to add that this was board created probably about twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. I think we just got on the board and since we have approved this, I think almost every year that we've been tweaking it every year. The whole board tweaks it and so. Director De La Cruz's suggestion, I think, is good and I would suggest that we actually come back with a suggestion. And we take this up. Next time to tweak it with that suggestion. In terms of impact, I think that's a, that's a big one.
Okay, are we, are we looking to maybe put this item on hold, modify? Or do we want to do that as we, whenever we have our retreat scheduled? Again, we're in crazy times, right?
And as Superintendent Truenell.
Superintendent Truenell.
Thank you, just a suggestion for the board to consider. There is a governance handbook that I believe Director Medina and Director Manieri. Have agreed to begin picking up this month to start that work and I will be doing that with them. And I believe that these could be integrated into that handbook. And therefore it could be a collective conversation about a system of governance. And and a further suggestion is in absence of that. That we might have at least some currently established norms as we get to that next place. So holding these potentially as approved tonight, if it is your pleasure. With modifications to come so that we have at least some approved established norms for right now.
Thank you, Superintendent Truenell. Further discussion, any other questions input from the board? I see Director Medina.
I'd like to move that we adopt the twenty twenty twenty-two revised board meeting. Communication norms.
Second. Okay, so motion from Director Medina, a second from Director Flores. Ready for a vote?
Director Beard.
Hi.
Director Medina.
Hi.
Director Flores.
Hi.
Director Manieri.
Hi.
Director De La Cruz.
Hi.
Director Fong.
Hi.
Director McCormick.
Hi.
President Sheffield.
Hi, all right, the motion carries, but let's make sure that we have further discussion on these items and make some adjustments. In the, in the months ahead. Moving on to agenda item E four, another action item, update on COVID nineteen safety handbook, Superintendent Truenell. And, oh, we have Executive Director of Special Services, Missouri, Steve.
Yes, and we'll just wait for him and I believe Director Haley as well. Will be joining us as we will be discussing sports and just having. A full encompassing conversation during this item. Board, Board President Sheffield, members of the board, staff and community. We know that these are challenging times. And we also know that this handbook is not written perfectly as we have found edits and other parts. That are sort of ripple effects to some of the decisions and recommendations that are coming either from the county, state. Or potentially recommendations for approval from the board. So we will constantly be monitoring and updating all of the sections of this handbook as we go. So tonight, we're bringing forward and I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Missouri. Here in a moment to present information that we've provided to the board for consideration. Specifically, looking at a first and second phase of potential actions. In addition to the guidelines that are being sort of presented to us by the county and state. And with that, Mr. Missouri.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Truenell, and I also want to thank comments prior to us. Catherine Howe, that's our TA and others that have talked about the work that we're trying to do. It is definitely something that we're, we're sharing. Every day, we are working with people at the school sites to try to make sure we're keeping everyone safe. We're trying to interpret these pieces. They are coming at us with changes every day right now, since we came back from from Christmas. And we expect at any time another serious change for students. And so, yes, as you mentioned, Superintendent Truenell, this is a live-in document. As soon as we get an order and we get something that changes, we have to update and push that out to people. And then we have to go through the whole sequence of retraining and talking about it with our COVID teams, the site coordinators. Everything we have to do to try to explain it. So I also want to thank the people that are working and some unsung heroes before I get into the presentation. You know, we have a number of people that are COVID team temporary workers that are that are here. Those of us that have been at Lewis in the afternoons, there's a great bunch of people that are helping us to keep that going. We're testing athletes weekly, we're testing employees weekly, we're handling COVID calls and COVID emails all the time. So, you know, underneath all this is a very strong team that is really just trying to do the best we can in a confusing time. So with that, let me do a quick share screen if I have those permissions. And then kind of go through this, there's not a lot of information in here that you're probably not familiar with already. I don't want to use this as a, although, you know, in the questions from the board, I'll try to answer any of the current. Trip contact tracing and interventions and things they've done for sure. But I'm primarily gonna talk about some of the big things that we want to do to keep ourselves safe from the surge and this Omicron surge. And that's going to be around our student and staff pool testing. As you know, there are comments and changes ever since we posted this on Friday night. There are now changes on the indoor seating and adjustments. There's some similar things in masking requirements and then just our extracurriculars and things we have to do to keep kids safe. No situations. I just want to show you some numbers. This is from the county website. So I'm gonna go through a couple of screen. These are the case rates, not the case rates, these are the numbers per hundred thousand. And in the top, you'll see just the various other active rates from the county when we uploaded on Friday. And then this afternoon at three o'clock, I did another upload. So if I toggle back and forth, eleven thousand active cases as of three o'clock from eight thousand. So there's obviously this, straight from our data, we know that there's absolutely a surge. When I micro down to our school systems, we posted this on Friday. And you can see that last minute surge. So this is our posting that we do every Friday in the weekend. Every week we've been tracking data, clearly we have a large surge that was hitting us on Friday and continued to do so. These are the numbers that we have tracked since Saturday. Now, these are, so since we distributed over fourteen thousand rapid tests this beginning this Friday and this weekend. We've been doing as Superintendent Truenell mentioned, there's absences, we're catching up to, kids are already on quarantine, students on ISP. So we are over fourteen thousand of those fifteen thousand three hundred tests, I think we've got. And those are our numbers, these are the numbers they're reporting to the county. One thing that's interesting in this wave is the county is so overwhelmed in this process. They're very much relying on us to give them this data of our students and staff. In this practice right now where we have. In this practice right now where we have, um. Parents that are having self-report through the over the counter rapids. They may or may not be following through the instructions and reporting online that we've asked them. So literally the partnership that we're doing with the county, we're feeding data. Um, and it's very critical that we're working together, and so this is the number that we have fed to county as of this afternoon. Uh, recommendery.
Yeah, just a quick question, um. The, the title of the slide is SRCS Omicron by the numbers, do we know that these are actually Omicron, um, like. Positive variance and, and the test results are.
It's not, it's not that sensitive and, and honestly, we don't get the reports, even if they are from PCR, it doesn't, it doesn't detail what variant it is. So perhaps that misleading, that could be Delta, that could be something else.
Okay.
But, you know, I'm just putting into the big surge, if you will.
Got it, thank you.
And Louis, as I mentioned, we are asymptomatic testing at Lewis. Every afternoon, Monday through Thursday. And these are the numbers of the people that have come through us. This is not in the numbers that have come to our county program, so also on Mondays and Fridays. The county pro- county's been doing symptomatic testing at Lewis as well. So the, these are just obviously very intense numbers that are happening. It is wonderful to have this kind of number because it means students and families are being safe. They're holding themselves accountable and we're keeping our schools safe. Just as a quick summary reminder that when we, when we did this back in September and before that with Governor Newsom, there were tiers and stages. That we discussed, we presented these kinds of tiers and stages, right now in conversations we're having with, um. Uh, county health that we're not, we're, we're moving so quickly that they are not using these hard stages anymore. So as an example, they're just making, instead of blanket stage remarks, they're basi- basically saying they're going after, like we saw with. Uh, Dr. Mace's, uh, indoor and outdoor settings, they're going after particular hotspots that they find. And they're trying to look at a more restricted, uh, incidents rather than an entire phase. That being said, we've developed a series of things that we're doing immediately. And then if we go to a more serious stage, we're going to go to the next level. And so as already you've mentioned, board in our guidance, we put in an appendix. These examples of what we're going to do immediately, so let me talk about the pooled testing. Uh, we are talking about a voluntary pooled testing, families and staff must opt in. Affirmatively to be involved in the program, that program will be, will be in classrooms. And it with our, uh, SRTA partners, we described in our MOU teachers assisting in that process. So, uh, students that want to participate, once a week will take a swab, put it in a, um. A vial, that'll get sent back as a pool, or it's easy to think of as a classroom. So now, uh, Mr. Mizaras Classroom One will all be pooled with a number of students that are in that room. That will get run through the lab as a pool, not identifying anything in particular. If there's a positive from that pool, then the company will come back out within two days. Run a rapid antigen test administered by them. And remove who was positive at that moment, and then isolate and go through the procedures and protocols. Director Sheffield, President Sheffield.
Thank you, I, I'm just wondering, Steve, um, do we have, um, a sense of other districts that are doing this? Uh, exact same thing that are, that are in the general area where we can sort of. Look and sort of model best practices on what, where they've been successful.
The, the pool testing is not happening in our county. As, as Superintendent Trunell, there are others that are going through a rapid, they're doing some rapid, uh, processes. Um, that has been dependent on the, uh, supply of antigen tests here, it's, it's kind of fluctuated.
Um, we're trying to develop, I guess, a, a combination, she has, uh, Superintendent Trunell mentioned.
We are trying to purchase rapid tests and we want to kind of develop this, this, uh. Two tiered process of pool testing, kind of like a screening test. But then have rapids available for anyone that might have symptoms or anyone that goes out, so. We don't really have a strong, the, the, the company is one of the state companies. And there, there is nothing similar that we're doing in, at our neighboring schools.
Okay, but we know in Marin County, for instance, they, they had, um, they had been working with their Department of Health Services and, and. Um, that sort of opened the door for them to be a part of this pilot, um, before. Um, students left for the winter break.
Yeah.
So something like this potentially could open the door for, um, some type of assistance from the state.
Absolutely, and, and we look forward to it, of course.
Great, thank you.
Director, uh, De La Cruz.
Thank you, my question is around the opt-in versus opt-out option for, for pool testing. And is the, like, requiring people to opt in? Is that part of the system or part of the program?
Yeah, that's, that's the state program unless. Is that me, am I frozen? No, okay, so unless, unless our board decides something differently, and that was a conversation in September. They, they come in in a pooled testing, whether or not it's voluntary or involuntary. That, that's our decision. Um, they will implement whatever our decision is, so in this model, it is an opt-in, they've done that in other districts.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, you know, what. It, it sounds like we have the opportunity to create an opt-out program, which is what we did for the, the, um, the tests, right, that we sent home.
We do.
Right, um, so I'd like to just raise that as a, as an opportunity for consideration. The other thing that I'd like to just, I'm, I'm wondering, is this kind of daily health screening or temperature checking?
Yeah.
Um. I'd love to just know kind of what our capacity as a district is to do. Temperature checking, especially as it hasn't necessarily been. Um, the most effective way of catching, like, testing is. Far superior, and so how, how can, you know, are, are we kind of tracking our resources to? Those, those tools that we have in our, you know, in our. Um. In our tool bags, um.
Yeah.
Not finding the right word, so are, you know, can, are we, are we making sure that what we're dedicating kind of. Bodies for right now is going to be the most impactful in terms of finding, finding COVID cases.
Yeah, absolutely, you know, it was, it was a, a practice that we obviously did in our return to school in the spring. Um, eh, in terms of if, if we were prioritizing effectiveness, I would not disagree that screening testing. Would, would catch more students, as obviously you saw the numbers as we did. Um, eh, we put it in a later stage for, for schools and parents in general. We're trying to do something a little more, less evasive, if you will, by the parent screener. What, what we think this does is this just talks about the importance of. Really double checking what we're talking about, the seriousness that we all took. Eh, as, it, it wouldn't be, uh, shocking news to say we became a little bit lackadaisical in some of these practices. This is a, an affirmative way that we go through that process and we remind parents to really be checking. Because there have been instances where kids are coming to schools with symptoms. So what that daily health screener, we thought that was a good start during this current phase, less evasive for the school staff. That it's basically an administrative function that parents do, employees do too. And we've had a checking and monitoring process we do. We're thinking only in the next phase, if things get really dire, that we would go to that, and again with that. By doing the temperature check, it also, it also does things like making sure you're coming to school with a well-fitted mask, the appropriate masks. Having that interaction, although time consuming, is also significant to make sure when you're entering the school day or entering the classroom. That we are taking that seriously, so. I think it just becomes part of the practice if things do get to that next level. We put some things in here and, and board we're welcome to, if we don't think we need to in the next phase, which would be beginning tomorrow. Do temperature checking at indoor sports, maybe it's irrelevant now that we have those other restrictions. Absolutely, so this is, it's, it's written like this, so board you could submit and make some of these changes to us. So we get, you know, the intent when we, when we leave here tonight. Um, and Director Manieri.
Yeah, um. What's the threshold for being in this moderate tier, are we? I mean, I see dates on here, right, like effective one twenty-four and, and one eighteen, so are we currently in this moderate tier? Are we making, or is this what our response is right now?
It is, th- this would be our response, these first, these first moderate, this is our immediate response. Tomorrow we would begin setting up the parent square for, for Monday or Tuesday. Pool testing would begin on the twenty-fourth, tomorrow we would send out the parent notification to begin the opt-in process. Right, so the, all these things would begin, uh, the, the effect order for indoor reductions and outdoor reductions begin. Tomorrow, so these things are all becoming effective after this meeting.
Got it, and I don't want to get a, ahead of ourselves, but I do want to understand, um, what, what. When we, if we move into the substantial, substantial transmission tier, so phase two, what is that threshold?
It is unclear, the county has not given me specific numbers anymore, I don't know if it's because things are just moving too quickly. They think it'll just bop back down, so they're not telling us, it, it, right now it's, I honestly, it just probably feels like. Uh, when the restrictions are severe in the community. You know, whenever the next, so this is, we obviously, the indoor requirement and closing things down, that's a pretty good level. Um, I would, we want to be able to respond. Um, when that next level, whatever the county determines that would be, would it be closing of indoor dining? At that point, that might be a clear indication, we're in this next phase, we need to respond in our district accordingly. And so what I'm just trying to do is create that dialogue, have that plan, so we know here's what's going to happen soon if we, you know. Decide to go there.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, um, then obviously there's other things that are like number six, oh, excuse me, so. Two important things to get past, I talked about the screener, that's the one that's on parent square. Uh, we'll also will begin having the clipboards at the offices when people come in to do the COVID checking. Uh, middle school sports, so we, as the middle school pro- sport programs begin operation in the winter. We decided to require basketball teams to wear masks, we made a different choice in secondary, at the high schools. And that choice requires them to have weekly testing. So we were, because of this surge and as reaction to be safer, we were going to be asking that when middle school starts their program. They can, they begin the program with masking. Wrestlers, however, because the dangers of their, that sport, they will continue to be unmasked, therefore they will have to test weekly. And then you see the limit there under number four, the change from when we went up on, on, uh, Friday. To now that's fifty capacity indoor and a hundred outdoors, and we'll come back to more of that later in the presentation. Uh, other things, you know, concessions happen in basketball games, of course, that's part of, that's a huge fundraiser at the school. We're going to continue to sell concessions, but they're going to have to be outside the gym. So we're not going to, do you have any practices where you have your mask off inside that gym? Uh, you may have already heard, we are looking at going to virtual for all our meetings at this point forward, that includes our professional development on one twenty-seven. Um, we are developing a reduced capacity indoors for rainy days in the elementary school sites. Where they are eating in the cafeteria, so each of our principals have developed over Christmas, a reduced schedule that rotates students. Less students through, um, and have them come back to their classrooms and we're ready to discuss those. With our union partners, so we can begin implementing that. And then, as you know, number nine, we've already pr- provided the rapid tests. And then we're gonna just continue our progressive, uh, enforcement with con- with employees who may miss testing, they may miss a week. Um, I'll mention it later, but there's new requirements for employees that begin February first, and we'll come back to that as well. And then in the next tier that we are discussing, talking about the daily temperature checks. Uh, will you, you may remember when we came back, we had really kind of rigid access on campuses. And they were really pursuing separating hallways and color coding students entrances and exits. So if we do go to that next level, excuse me, that next phase, that may be something we bring back to keep our separation as much as possible. Uh, we are discussing, uh, the ability to, uh, try to keep your mask on as much as possible when you are eating. Keep the mask, if you will, forgive the vernacular as a chin diaper. And then just have your food, put it back up to really try to reduce that, that, um, risk. Because that is one of the more riskiest times at school, it's so risky, in fact, that. If you are close contacted during that phase, you may not be eligible if you're unvaccinated to continue in school. Um, I highlight number four, we'll talk about that later. Um, we currently have a strong recommendation for mask wearing outside, you know, we could take that to another level. And require mask wearing outside, I do need to tell you, board, as you've been to school sites. Uh, our students are doing a great job of keeping masks on. I'm seeing students walking to school with masks on in their groups, I think they're really doing an excellent job, so that. May or may not be necessary, but that could be, it's a recommendation, and that could be something we follow through if we decide to go to the next level. Um, move to required and mandatory virtual meetings like five oh fours SSTs, right now it's optional. And it's encouraged in this current wave, but a, a parent at this point does have that right. And then, you know, if we are at that extreme level, we should be talking about canceling overnight events. We should not be, uh, having kids overnight in those kind of situations. Field trips, you know, there are spring things that come out for extracurriculars. Um, and so we will kind of, we'll have to kind of consider those in the safe routines that we want to develop. So, um, talking about our new guidance and indoor events. So as you're, I, I think you're well aware in, in the order, they tried to keep regular classroom or school activities. Minimally impacted, so our lunches in the cafeterias and things are supplied as normal. Rallies or, or meetings we may have, those are, are normal, because those are considered a normal classroom. But we sent this language out to our families this week to talk about what we're going to look at for indoor sports, and this is. Conversation we can have here shortly. Um, and then the same thing for outdoors. We're kind of coalescing with other school districts as well to kind of understand where they are going and where their boards are going. On some of this language, um, and so, you know, the outdoor setting obviously gives us a lot more flexibility. To be spaced and use, you know, if you're talking about the outdoor, uh, sports facility, it's a lot greater in size. And so board, we wanted to show you this, now this is a new slide, this is new information, it was not in the original packet upload, so I want to use that. But you, we have gathered the information from other, uh, districts and where they are going with this, and in, in red. Board, we are asking for kind of our recommendations and what we look at, and this will be part of our discussion. Uh, of what, how we want to implement the fifty person capacity that Dr. Mace has and the county have dictated to us. Um, I mentioned real briefly, so, so beginning February first, staff has to be boosted in addition to double vaxxed. If not, if they choose not to, then they be, then they have to participate in twice weekly testing. And we're going to just continue our efforts, in addition to the pool testing, we'll have a separate group of people that are, uh, um, testing our employees. Now we're talking about twice a week. Um, I say all that about guidance, we are expecting imminently quotations. The, um, uh, California Public Health to realign. The K twelve student guidance with what was just recently released from Public Health at the adult guidance. In, in a nutshell, that's basically for close contacts, there's now a five-day window with a retest. And an option to come back on day six, not a standard. Uh, ten-day quarantine period. So I don't have all those details, there may be some differences around it coming up, or again, we're waiting for these. And the other thing I do want to recommend, I want, want to make notice is we have to adjust our guidelines. The public health has written into their guidelines that someone that has been COVID positive. Is now ninety days, if they're unvaccinated, they are treated like they are vaccinated, of course, that's due to the antibodies. That are now in their system, those either employees or students don't have to take a PCR test, because they, they would show a positive. But then for ninety days, those orders, those students, you know, are considered vaccinated if they weren't vaccinated, and then they fall under those rules. And we'll turn it over for any further questions before we, uh, have comments from the public.
I do want to add something before the board jumps in, so. In regard to, if you, Steve, if you, I'm sorry, if you could go back to the slides about sports and, um, our additions. For the board's, uh, consideration about family, uh, immediate family, et cetera. So we recognize that this is a critical time, um, for spectators, uh, especially for various grade levels. We've been hearing from many of our senior parents as well. Um, and I want everyone to know that there were eight districts who, and SRCS was one of those. Who put forth a, uh, letter to Dr. Mace, uh, requesting some reconsideration. Of the, uh, number allowance and, uh, we were. Of the uh, number allowance and uh, we were asking for twenty percent capacity. Of any facility which would allow a district or a school. To then take into consideration the full capacity of a facility and then allow for twenty percent um, spectators. Um, and participants in general in the space. And so we're waiting for some additional uh, consideration around that request. We know how critical it is for families to be present and supporting their athletes. Uh, and so with that, we've we've added some additional consideration for the board here tonight about immediate family members being present. Um, I want everyone to know that in our initial thinking. We literally were trying to do some math about if we had a certain number of athletes from both teams. Coaching staffs, stats, people, referees, maybe videographers. Um, many, we uh, have the capacity at for many of our schools to actually do live feeding. And so that requires, you know, um, some staff to be present to assist with that. After we did those numbers, um, we were really approaching that fifty person threshold. Knowing that the guidance also adds um, some consideration for space and social distancing. Uh, we started thinking about tiers of what if we only allowed senior parents, uh, one or two in the space. Uh, where we felt like there could be a challenge is if we had many parents uh, or. People from the community, including students who want to root on and cheer on their classmates. Um, where do we draw the line? Um, is it simply by number of people in the space? And after we get to a certain number, we don't let anyone else in. Um, we really, our goal is not to be able to have those challenges with the community. Our goal is to be able to set up a space where our students can play. And then allow for some concessions for uh, additional attendees. So I wanted to add that additional detail for the board. Um, as we consider all of these options. And with that, I will hand it back over to President Sheffield. Thank you, Mr. Missouri.
You know, I just want to say thank you Superintendent Trenell and your fellow super uh, superintendents for moving swiftly on getting that request to the county. We heard from um, a number of um, our school community during public comment earlier tonight. I assume we will be hearing from more. It is really important. We have gone through, you know, hell in the last two years. Um, and so I I I think it was a reasonable request to make um, to the county. Um, I want to thank um, uh, um, Executive Director Missouri. Um, and um, and Alyssa as well. Are there further questions from the board right now on this presentation before we go to public comment? We have um, we have Director McCormick's hand raised.
Um, I have two questions. One is probably opening Pandora's box, but I'm going to ask it anyways because I want clarification on it. Or someone to speak to it or for us to get clarification on it. Um, so I've heard two things. I've heard that uh, this um, thirty day. Uh, no large public gatherings, fifty indoor, hundred outdoor, if you can't socially distance. Um, I've heard that it is a requirement or a mandate, and then I've also heard it's a recommendation. Um, which one is it?
It is an order.
It is an order.
It is. Yes.
Okay, um, and so um, oh wait, we're just doing questions, right? We're just doing questions. Okay, then my next question is um. We started doing temperature checks and thermometers early on and then um, we kind of. Us and it seems like the rest of the world kind of started to move away from that, except for maybe in medical facilities. Um, I still saw it a bit. Um, and I think a lot of that was because um, just the accuracy level of these handheld um, temperatures and your outdoors and you're in, you know. And people are cold, people are hot, you're out in conditions and you can be contagious and not have a fever. And so I think, I mean, I'm not a doctor, not a doctor. Uh, but I think uh, logistically, we kind of moved away from it because it wasn't um. Super accurate and there were other other protocols that were better uh, indicators of who was safe to be on campus and who wasn't. Um, so I'm just kind of wondering why we're revisiting that. Um, when I think we should be putting more of our efforts into tests, regular testing and educating about vaccines and boosters and all of that. So I'm just, I don't know if that's a hard answer, uh, looking for a hard answer. I'm just asking the question. I'm a little confused on bringing the thermometers back.
No, we 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 brought that in that higher level because it was, in fact, some of our MOU when we returned to school. So at some point it was a very, you know, important piece of our intervention practice. And so we put it in there and it it's up for revision. And I would not disagree with you that it's it's one of the lower level of uh, inst or occurrences to really identify it. And you know, it's a little bit evasive on the staff and so I'm, I just put it there for conversation. I appreciate it. No, you bring it up, Dr. McCormick.
Okay, thank you. Director Fong.
Thank you, President Sheffield. Two questions. Steve Missouri, Executive Director Steve Missouri. What does it mean? And I can't remember the verb you used or adjective you used about is restricted lunch or recess. What is what does that mean? Maybe that's not the word.
When one of the evaluations that you use, if someone has been exposed in close contact is the setting. And one of the things public health has looked for is one of the settings that are a concern is when there's a mask offsetting. So the lunch period is a concern, and if that's where the close contact has, that has a different. Uh, bend in the flow chart, if if you will, on what we do with that student. So an unmasked close contact is different than a masked classroom close contact. That's probably what I what I was trying to refer to.
So specifically, does that mean the kids are going to get a shorter lunch period or that's not it at all?
That's 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 one of the reasons because they're then they'll be with each other. So instead of a twenty minute total lunch, we're going to try to move things through, let's say, in a ten minute. What we're also trying to do is reduce the number of students physically in the indoor location. So instead of having one of the pullout benches in the cafeteria with ten students on it, we're developing so it's only five. Obviously, that gives us greater distance, that reduces the amount of of potential for close contact when you have to take your mask down. So that's primarily what we're trying to do on those rainy days when we're not able to go outside on the benches and move things around. Don't have the facilities to cover everyone else as Superintendent Trenell mentioned we're looking at. That was one of the ways to reduce the impact during a rainy day and reduce that spread.
Okay, which segues into my second and last question about. Uh, where are we possibly in making sure that every school has covered outdoor, outdoor covered eating areas? I mean, what does that take? That's a huge ask because I know that some do, some don't.
Yeah.
Thank you. I I will defer that one and then ask for Deputy Superintendent Edson. So um, what it would take is an examination of each space. Um, I did a mock uh, of that very light, not official. Um, at one particular school site last Friday. Um, and just all the overall um, situation of lunchtime. Um, and so it would be a literal need to look at the amount of space. And then the number of tents um, that we would need to purchase. Um, there are logistics at work. So for example, um, if one school needed ten tents, for example, to cover. All of the space because we're looking at a very quick solution. Um, we would need staff who would have to uh, put up those tents and break down those tents daily. Because we could not leave them as permanent structures. Um, and they potentially have the ability to get um, um, misused, um, you know, over time. So I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Edson to speak more to this.
Thank you, Superintendent. Uh, what Superintendent said was exactly uh, correct. Um, we are evaluating sites under um, the loosening, if you will, of the Vision of State Architects or DSA's requirements. For these structures. Uh, one of our concerns certainly is tents that can go in quickly. Uh, would be prone to um, destruction and or theft. Or graffiti if left up uh, over a period of days. Uh, so we're looking at ways that we could accommodate that. Um, both with with staffing and I'll say practicality of giving these uh, put up uh, each morning that deemed it necessary. Uh, right now, um, you know, we're certainly concerned about rain. Uh, and uh, hopefully we still have some more rain coming um, for for the area and for the state. Uh, but certainly the same discussion will carry on into coverage when the weather turns nicer and warmer. Uh, so we're looking at solutions that could transcend uh, the spring. Uh, looking at longer term solutions, we know many of our school sites. Uh, since they were built, do not have covered outside eating areas. Uh, which would take more time, uh, architect rendering drawings, uh, and then ultimately approval. Uh, so we are looking for solutions whether um, very temporary, like what we what um. Director Missouri and his teams are using for isolation tents. Uh, but using those uh, mass, you know, quantities of twelve to twenty. Depending on the campus and location uh, in order to facilitate that. Uh, and and we'll have more information uh, about moving forward on that immediately uh, upcoming meetings. Uh, for sure, uh, as well as some other ideas that we are discussing with more permanent solutions.
Thank you.
Director De La Cruz.
Thanks. I'm going to turn my camera back on to see if this works, but my internet's been a little unstable. Um, so just going back to, you know, this question of being able to eat outside. Um, you know, are we able to create some flexibility for those kids who have a place to sit outside that may be covered? Whether it's under the eaves or in another place? I mean, we know that this is the single highest riskiest transmission. I know this personally, um, in my own family with my own child. And so I just like this is, this just feels like, you know, this is. As identified by County Health, as identified by our stats and our data, we got to get creative. Is there a way for kids to sit in the long hallways? You know, on on mats on, you know, in some way where we're creating distance in places that are better ventilated than having kids. You know, sit next to each other inside on a bench. They're they're going to squish next to each other. They're sitting together on a bench. So just, you know, I really, I really, really hope that we're able to get creative and quick and flexible. Um, you know, I hear lots of PTAs also saying we're happy to go buy pop ups and figure out how to pop them up and put them down. I think you have resources in our community for some of these. I think the last thing I'll say is, you know. How are we also listening to our kids? Um, who know that they shouldn't be eating inside or be inside unmasked? Um, how are we making sure that those kids who are articulating some of those concerns aren't being gaslighted? Um, or put in situations where they feel unsafe? Um, because our rules are tight during this time. So just, you know, really, what what are the additional resources or decisions that this board needs to make? To facilitate this problem getting solved quickly? Um, I know we have been working towards, you know, outdoor spaces since April of twenty twenty, when this board started raising those questions. And so, you know, how, what what else do you need from us in terms of action? Um, or resources or direction to to solve these challenges?
Thank you for that, Director De La Cruz. Um, and certainly I want to just magnify that our student voices are really important too. Um, as we listen to them for what they're feeling safe uh, about. One of the things that you asked about is schools providing picnic tables or such. Under the awnings of outdoor walkways, many of our schools are already doing that as a concession. Um, and I've seen that in action. Um, I think the tricky part is for some of our schools that have indoor hallways only. It actually becomes a safety factor to crowd students in those spaces if there is a need for emergency exit. So we have to look at all of those magnifying factors. Um, I you had asked, you're asking what can the board do? Um, what I heard Mr. Edson say is that we're putting together some information. We're putting together some quick time information for purchasing that we can do right now. Um, for those pop up tents and whatnot. Um, so when we bring additional information forward to the board for those more more permanent structures. Um, we will certainly want the board's potential support based on the data and information that we bring you. And I will just put a plug in here that when we do acquire these tents, um, depending on the size. We may need those uh, PTO parent um, volunteers to assist us with the setup and breakdown. Um, because it is a lot for a single person who might be responsible uh, for doing that. So all hands on deck um, would be absolutely appreciated. And Mr. Missouri, were you going to say something?
Yeah, let me just, uh, at the risk of upsetting my elementary colleagues here, you know, just bored. You, I think without stating that, you know, when you go onto a middle school campus at seventh grade, they're eating wherever they want to eat. And they're outside and they're not inside. And you know, this is just one of, this is my own non-COVID administrator position. What's so magical between going from sixth to seventh that I can't go outside and eat somewhere? So I think Director De La Cruz, there's a culture, there's something that we we have, we do not need board policy. To allow some kids to eat outside. It's a culture change and I will, Miss Haley, maybe that's my colleague here, my elementary colleague. Let's go lead that culture and let's go eat outside on the bleachers like a seventh grader does.
Thank you for saying that, Steve.
There are lots of that. Okay, thank you.
And 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 thank you, um, Director De La Cruz for bringing up those points. We have um, uh, Director Many Aries hand raised.
Thank you. Yeah, I I had very similar questions to Director De La Cruz's. Um, my my other questions, um. When when I was reviewing the handbook, I I did have some questions with regard to the common scenario section.
Yeah.
Um, so I just to help me understand, I I I do spend a lot of time kind of helping folks understand these kinds of documents, especially. Our Latinx family, so I just, it's kind of like for my understanding, but also for their understanding. Um, why, why, why is it that for um, for children or students who test positive? That there's no um, like testing negative requirement for? So when I was looking at the common scenarios, the only testing require, the only testing negative requirement to come back to school. Um, are for those who have had exposures, but not for those who have tested positive. And I I I've gotten a lot of questions about why that, why it is that we're seeing that difference.
And and that might just be a number of us catching up to the changes. And in fact, the changes are still coming. So there there is a difference between getting the the return um, and quarantine, the difference between isolation, if you have a positive. And quarantining because you've been exposed. So right now there's a difference and just to cut to it. Unless things, until the guidelines changes, I can come back to school sooner having a positive than I can having an exposure if I'm unvaccinated. So that's an example that has to get aligned. Right now, they change the alignment for someone that has a positive. On the fifth day after five days, they can take a negative antigen test and come back on the sixth. If I'm an unvaccinated person exposed in an unmasked setting like home. I have to wait until at least seven to eight days before I can even begin to come back with the same test. So that's the alignment we're waiting to happen. And honestly, we I want to wait for all that to happen and then to update those guidelines. And the feedback we're hearing, Director, is that the the flow charts are the best things. Our 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 secretaries, our fefts, everyone, they want to have the flow charts. And so I kind of want to, the flow charts are really what help families and and workers at school to go through. And I really want to use those as the tool. I told County Health the other day, gosh, just get us the flow charts before you get us all the tables and the charts and and we can run with it. And you know, that flow chart in Spanish so we can help families push out. So I I didn't, that's an example of the guidelines are going to have to get readjusted. We're going to put a high priority on on flow charting. I'm developing something right now because the county doesn't, hasn't done anything to really explain that. Um, and I I just, I know that's a gap, so I I appreciate that. And we know the guidance and the scenarios have some fine tuning to do.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, they also just seem to differ a little bit from the the updated. I think it's the CDPH, the K through twelve, wait, yeah, the K through twelve guidelines that are of.
Yeah, of higher.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes.
Um, and then on that kind of same thread, um, have we considered maybe in the? With updates to recommendations around masking and face coverings. Um, have we considered including visuals of like, uh, cause I've seen those like on social media, right? Like what's good? What's better and what's best with KN ninety-fives and N ninety-fives? Um, being the best option for families. Have we considered updating that section with visuals like that?
We will, and and we wanna have actually a video of what that looks like, you know, the double masking of the cloth and the paper, the surgical. You know, we're gonna push out just surgical is better. We have those in schools. If nothing else, you just come and take. The surgical masks that are in every classroom and in every office, we would be ninety percent there because that is one of the strengths. We obviously, we wanna be cautious to say we require a KN ninety-five for every student every day. We have surgical masks and that still meets the guidelines that that the county and state have put out for us.
Thank you.
It looks like um trustee Flores has his hand raised.
Thank you, President Sheffield. So, um, I don't know, um, uh. I know I received and or had a couple of conversations with teachers months ago about the rainy day uh tents. And I I I thought this was already, you know, a a done deal. So I'm a little perplexed as to why. This is being brought up now, but I'm glad it's being done. But I just, I'm just a little bit perplexed that is, you know, we're talking about it now. So, um, could you talk a little bit about what I think was Kim? And Kim was a parent. She mentioned about banning parents from um sporting events. Uh, and that's not necessarily true, right? Uh, but could you explain what what that is? Um, I just wanna make sure that we address her point.
Is your mic working too?
Yes, it is. I'm gonna ask, sorry, I just, um, Miss Haley, when she speaks. I really wanna be sure that people understand it's fifty indoors, period. Or one hundred outdoors with social distancing. People are interpreting the or with social distancing to also mean the fifty indoors. And if there's an or there. So, Miss Haley, if you could please.
Thank you for your question, Director Flores. So, uh, I really wanna recognize that we understand. Parents wanting to be there, not only is there is their child in the event. Um, or the match or the game. We understand that their commitment to behind their their children and where they're at. Because we see the child, we see the family. And so with that, we wanna say, how how do we? Get fifty people indoors when you have two basketball teams that have fifteen players? You have coaches, you have referees, you have scorekeepers. So we have all these added layers. And our goal is if there's extra room, is to find a way to get our senior parents there to see their kids. I I'm not trying to diminish any other parent in in another grade. But it's really, you know, we do know that importance. So our goal is to try and see what we can do um within following the orders.
And when do you think we'll find out if we will do the twenty percent capacity? Because that would do, you know, that will solve the problem. But um. Um, when are we expecting um Dr. Mace to respond?
That is at her discretion at this point. We will follow up.
And um, thank you. And then one last. Uh, point, uh, in the handbook for family, uh, for students and family. There was an addition about uh to encourage students to wear masks while eating, you know, and then, you know, pull the mask off and on while taking a bite. Um, you know, we got, I I I know I've got at least three emails about this. Um, could you explain the reasoning behind that? Uh, and, um, you know, and it's encouraged, not a mandate. Uh, as to why this was added to the handbook?
Well, what we're finding is sometimes that students are are at the table, they may be done eating. They may just be, they're they're there, they have to wait a certain period of time or wait till they get their tables cleared or things like that. And so there could be time where we just wanna encourage them when they're not actively eating to put that mask back on. Again, that reduces the potential of time, that reduces that close contact of maybe of of how much time they would have been without a mask. So kind of like an active eating, we're gonna do the best we can to 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 kind of just reduce that and just keep that chin diaper, if you will. And just kind of move up and down, you know. Um, I I think it's just a a practice that we have to have a habit on. We wanna make sure. It's just not off altogether, that they're trying to actively do it because there is some time where they're sitting. And we just wanna make sure during active eating, if you will, we we try that. So that was just, again, Director uh Flores, a thought. To try to find another way to make the lunch moment, which is a. Uh, one of the concerning moments for public health, make that a little bit safer.
Okay, but it's it's only encouraged. No one's going to start policing these and and start calling kids, you know, oh, okay, all right, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for clarifying.
You know, I I have a question. I'm not sure if it's for um for Rick or or for you, Steve. It has to do with the outdoor coverings and short-term. Solutions. Um, I'm wondering specifically. How quickly could we implement covered outdoor coverings? Is this something that could be done? Um, before the rains come? Is this something that could be done next week? You know, I work for a health system. We had to mobilize and put outdoor tents. We have a hell of a lot more regulations. And, you know, that we have to follow, but we were able to put um um outdoor tents up at most of our hospitals. Um, yes, we have a lot more resources, but we were able to do that, you know, fairly quickly. I'm wondering, you know, do we have a specific on time? For for um the sites that we know don't have um outdoor uh covered areas.
I I would say at this point, uh, we're pretty confident that we can get uh tents immediately. Uh, using similar ones to uh the isolation rooms that are at every site. Uh, obviously not with all four panels or three panels on on all sides.
But it's better than the alternative, which is not.
Our MNO director, Eric Oden and I were discussing uh earlier today about that and also bringing in uh Kelly Cook with purchasing. Uh, in order to facilitate that where we can get some on order um as soon as tomorrow.
And would that include tables inside the tents?
But a lot of the sites have tables.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, that we would try and utilize. We're also going to um talk with principals about alternative areas similar to what. Director uh De La Cruz was mentioning, um, perhaps not putting tables in the hallways, but putting them separated in different areas of campus. Uh, we know, you know, that a a couple of school sites at least, excuse me. That, you know, where the some of the lunch tables are now, if you put tents on there or in that area. It's going to cover natural light and window openings to some classrooms. Uh, so we're taking that into account as well. Uh, and that was really the uh the push to move, uh, potentially move some eating areas. To uh other locations on campus with covering. Uh, thus also creating more distance between students as well as Director Mazzara was mentioning.
Great. It sounds like we're mobilizing pretty quickly then. I just have one more question. And, you know, this again has to do with um. Time and how quickly, I I'm thinking about maybe steps that not putting additional workload on. Our school staff or custodial staff, and if it's possible with willingness from um family members. Um, like me, who I drop my kids off every morning, who who could help. Erect, set up these tents and then pick up, bring them down, you know. Can we tap into that type of um sweat equity workforce of of volunteers? Who are able to come on campus, you know, in the mornings and maybe maybe stick around at the end of the day. Um, what can we do? Um, reaching out to our school sites to to look for that type of assistance.
So, yes, we can certainly um. Look at that as an option. Uh, we we will want to work with our uh labor groups. To ensure that we, it is not interpreted that we are taking work away. From one of our employees, but that we are providing an additional service. Uh, in order to um bring these safety measures to full scale.
Great. Um, other questions from the board before we go to public comment? Not seeing any. All right, let's go to public comment.
Thank you. As is our practice with items that are popular with a lot of hands, I'm going to lower all hands. And ask if there are any students first who would like to make public comment on item E four. Students, please raise your hand at this time if you'd like to comment on this item. And Natalie would like to comment. Natalie, could you state your full name for the record, please?
Hi, Natalie Goodrich.
And you are a student?
No, no, I am a mother.
Ah, okay. Then if you would hold for just one moment, please. We have one other hand raised as a student hand. Kelly De Vries, are you a student?
Uh, sorry, no.
Okay. Don't mean to confuse everybody, but that is the practice, especially in these long meetings. Um, now we will open it to anyone to raise their hand. It looks like we don't have students here that wanna comment on this. Thanks, everybody. And Natalie. Would you please state your last name again for me?
Natalie Goodrich.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak to you folks. I know. You are all not in an easy situation and things are changing quickly. In our home, we support teachers and staff. And we always have, we always will, and we appreciate everything that you folks are doing. I know that you are all working for the greater good to keep schools open. But I am, my husband and I are incredibly fearful of the fact that the measures that we are taking. Uh, when it comes to our children in public school and the coronavirus is. Really doing more harm in the long run than good. Our children's mental health is suffering at such an incredible rate that. The measures that we're talking about with masks and masking at lunch, making lunch shorter. Um, outdoor eating, making sure kids aren't as close together as they should be. Making students not available to go to support their classmates, parents not available to go and support their children. These measures are actually more harmful than good. If. If parents or students are scared of their children being at school and contracting COVID. They have other options. And in our home, we don't want anyone to get sick. We want everyone to do well and be healthy. But. I'm just wondering. Uh, from a parent's point of view, I understand the position that each of you are in and the challenges that you're faced with, but. It's it's very concerning as a parent to get on these board meetings and hear. Of the extreme measures that we're going to for a virus. That we don't, we don't want to infect anyone, but that is coming at the risk of our children and doing very long. Long-term damage to them. I I just, I I would beg and plead with the board. To have these kinds of conversations and to talk about this so that. We as parents can help you see what's happening when they come home because.
I am so sorry, um, Ms. Goodrich, but you reached your two-minute time li- limit and then a little bit more. So, um, we have to move on to the next comment. And a reminder to everybody, we do have a two-minute time limit. Um, next is Kelly De Vries.
Hi, uh, I agree with what Natalie was saying. I feel definitely like. Especially this new strain of COVID is not hurting our student population. Uh, these overreaching um mandates and response to it is what's negatively impacting them greatly. And affecting their experience in high school or junior high or elementary school or whatever it is. Um, I was coming on to appeal and plead with you all to advocate for spectators at indoor sports. To appeal to Sandori Mays, and I applaud you that uh that you have already done that. It shouldn't just be senior parents. It should be all parents as well as some of the student body. There are more kids who go and cheer in the stands than play at the games. It's an integral part of high school and twenty percent sounds like a reasonable request to do that safely. I'm also confused at why we are still talking about social distancing in a gym where people are masked when we are no longer. Doing social distancing in the classroom, which is the much smaller space. Uh, let's not have these kids have a bare-bones high school experience watered down to sterile games and empty gyms. We can do better for our kids. Thank you Superintendent Trunell for the twenty percent.
Thank you. And next is Janelle Payne.
Good evening, everyone. And just so you know, oh, there it's the timer. Okay. So first, regarding the pooled testing, I would like to strongly encourage. An opt-out policy instead of an opt-in policy on that. We're gonna get far more participation if we go opt-out. It's gonna be much more meaningful process doing it that way. Um, and I'm also hopeful that if we were to pursue opt-out policies for that, we could potentially start that pooled testing. Sooner, maybe by next week. Um, second, regarding the outdoor masking policy, uh, I understand the reasoning behind it. My question and my concern is how do we enforce it? If we move to an outdoor masking policy, we already have too few eyes on our campuses to begin with. And we have increasing numbers of staff out with each new day. How would we enforce that at the site level? And if it's not enforceable, then why do we do it? Third, regarding shortened lunches, we do know that COVID is airborne. Despite the misinformation in the last comment, it is impacting children. Um, and moving students through the cafeteria in shorter bursts of time. Does not reduce the viral load in the room. Because you don't have to be there at the same time or see the person for the virus to exist in the air. And if we're encouraging students to wolf down their food. At some breakneck pace, we're also not modeling or encouraging healthy behavior for our kids. So I would ask you what we're really doing with these policies. What is the purpose of the policy? Is it to truly keep the students safe? Or is it so we can check some boxes and say we're meeting whatever, whatever? And um, we're, you know, trying to really reduce the contact tracing and possible quarantining we have to do. What is the purpose of our policies and how and who will enforce them on campuses? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next is Jamie. Jamie, would you please um state your last name for the record?
Hi, my last name is Denning. And um, I have questions. And so I was wondering, can they get answered?
Uh, no, this is public comment only. It's not a question and answer session.
Okay, um, well, maybe y'all can think on it and answer it at some time. Um, what does this isolation site that you mentioned look like? And what are the legal limits for inhaling carbon dioxide? Did you know that it takes under one minute of continuous breathing? In a mask for the levels of CO2 to be unsafe? And continuous breathing of high CO2 can cause brain damage. Respiratory problems, cerebral circulation problems, central nervous system problems. And um, so what what are you doing to be able to let the children breathe? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Denning. Next is Catherine Howell.
Hi, good evening again. Um, I'm gonna start by saying thank you for the conversation about tents, but I find it myself unable to. To keep myself from reminding you that uh SRTA brought up the conversation about tents and rainy day lunches and outdoor eating. To be safe in August. Uh, we brought it up at negotiations and was shot down. Uh, we brought, I I sent a letter to every single member of this board. Asking, begging for a rainy day policy and got no response. Um, I mentioned it in at least three, if not four, of my board reports. And we brought it up almost weekly at our labor management meetings and got nothing. Until all of a sudden now, oh, we can order tents tomorrow. We need to do this before the rain starts, which. I love you, President Sheffield, but it started, right? We've already have rain. It's too, it's, it's. I'm gonna try to calm down, but I couldn't keep myself from commenting that we have been begging for this since August. And here it is, January twelfth. And and now this board has finally made a decision to. And, and now this board has finally made a decision to provide safe, outdoor, sheltered eating spaces for our students. So I thank you for that, but I couldn't help myself but remind you. Thank you.
Thank you. And just a reminder for everyone, this is public comment on item E four with a two-minute time limit per comment. Next is Shelby Pryor.
Thank you. You guys can hear me?
Yes.
So I find it interesting when Mr. Mizra goes ahead and comments to one of the board members explaining that this test can pick up, they can't determine whether it's picking up Delta or the other variant or something else. Could that be the flu or the common cold? Does that mean that the numbers that you guys are ousting are putting out there, let's be clear, are not accurate to what we're looking for when we're talking about this pandemic? I also find it interesting that all pediatric studies were completely deferred, as mentioned in the FDA's approval letter that was issued on August 23rd, 2021. The pediatric studies in youth will not be completed until as early as 2027. As I stated in the final, as stated in the final approval letter, we have determined that an analysis of spontaneous post-marking adverse events reported under section 505 K1 of the FDCA will not be sufficient to assess known serious risks of myocardi- myocarditis and, uh, pericarditis and, and identified unexpected serious risk of subclinical myocarditis. Further, the pharma, uh, pharma, that's a difficult word, system that the FDA, FDA is required to maintain under the section 505 K3 of the FDCA is not sufficient to assess these serious risks because clinical trials will not be completed in the youth until years later. How is it that we are currently injecting them with experimental drugs? Have the parents of these children all seen the official authorization letters from the FDA? I was not, I was not provided this information from my local pharmacy, so my doubt is prominent. Please advise us as to how we're supposed to move forward. It's interesting that Doc-
Mr. Pryor, I apologize, but you have reached your two-minute time limit. We have to move on. Veronica Jordan is next.
Good evening, board. Good evening, Superintendent Trunell. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. This is Veronica Jordan. I'm a parent of a first grader and fifth grader at CCLA and a physician in the community. And I just really want to say, use most of my time to say thank you for the strong, strong language of keeping our children in school during this time that I hear from Superintendent Trunell, from all the board members and from the SRTA president as well. Um, I absolutely, um, think that this is a hard position to take now with, um, all over the country, schools making different decisions. And I really, really, really want to appreciate that you are making this, taking that strong position. Um, and recognizing that the health and safety of our children extends beyond the, the notion of COVID infection and into their mental health and their physical health and their ability to have as normal of a life as they possibly can during these very abnormal times. Um, I just want to encourage us, um, as I've heard you tonight, that really our kids can eat outdoors in this climate. Um, at basically every single day of the year, and there's only a few days in the last few months that, that really was raining enough that you even need a tent. So I would encourage us to have a policy that every meal is outside as you're working on the tent policy because that is the highest risk period. I also would encourage you to have some way for us to report our negative COVID antigen test back because I don't know that you have any way of knowing how many of us actually did the tests that we received in the last week. Um, and I think it would be nice to see some denominators on that. I think it would make us all feel better that those tests were being used. Um, and I would encourage you also to, um, make those tests available for our symptomatic kids so that we can get kids back in school as soon as possible and have a testing algorithm allowed by CDPH to get kids back in school using those rapid tests. As you all know, PCRs are impossible to get these days. And if we want kids in school, we need quick tests. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Molly Fisher.
Thank you so much. Um, I just want to say that we are already in that dreaded, uh, red high transmission tier, no matter how elastic these things get. Um, we are at 172.8 um, per 100,000 new cases in Sonoma County today. So that puts us, we're in it. This is an unprecedented spike, but there's hope. It's hopefully going to be short. If you look at cases are already falling in places where, um, they experienced this rise really fast. They're starting to level off and come down again. Um, if we do need to close the school for a short period of time, just to, you know, make sure everybody stays safe. I'm okay with that, just so that you have some more parent input. Um, I want to thank you for the testing, for the PPE, for the CO2 ventilation monitoring. And, um, just want to say that, uh, the rapid antigen tests are accurately detecting SARS coronavirus too, not flu. So thank you so much. Take care of you guys.
Thank you. Next is Micah Carlin Goldberg.
Good evening. My name is Micah Carlin Goldberg. I'm a teacher at Steel Lane Elementary. I would like to echo President Howell's complete frustration, and in my case, anger at the lack of leadership and, and action from Santa Rosa City Schools. We've been asking for tents for months. We've been asking for asymptomatic testing for months with no action. None. I love the ideas to try and get the tents up. Not all of our schools have PFOs. Steel Lane, 80% of our students show up on the bus. Their parents aren't coming to school to drop them off. We don't have a PTA, right? We don't have the, we don't have the people. The idea to spread the kids over campus to eat is untenable. We have three yard supervisors to monitor 200 kids eating and then 200 kids on the playground and a different 200 kids eating during our lunchtime. Three. We don't have the staff to implement that. I really wish that our school leadership would listen to the teachers and the people who are actually in the classroom about what we need. I'd also like to put a different perspective on our kids' mental health. I think it's not because we're making them wear masks and come to the school. I think it's because they realize that our society has decided that they are expendable. We are not willing to put the resources and the peoples into our school to actually make them safe. We're not willing to do what is necessary to actually prevent climate change, which they see looming on their futures. I, it's not because their life isn't like it wasn't before the pandemic. It's because the adults in charge have proved time and again that they're not willing to do what is required to keep them safe. Please take real action tonight and really do what we need to do to keep our kids safe. Not just the building open and kids leaving constantly while they're sick. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder, this is item E four, two-minute time limit. Next is Patrick Bailey.
Hi, my name is Pat Bailey. I'm a parent of a kindergarten kid at CCLA. A few comments. We've been in school for over 90 days. Thank you. It's been great. Uh, my kid wears a mask. His friends wear masks. The kids are not having troubles wearing masks. Even the middle kid, school kids are wearing masks. Once in a while they turn into chin straps, but mostly they wear their masks. Superintendent Trunell, a very useful concise summary tonight. Thank you very much. Uh, great information. The KN95 masks, good job getting them. I have friends who teach in other districts. They don't have them and they lament that. President Howell, I appreciate you suggesting that parents become, uh, subs. I do have a couple of friends who tried to do this and they ended up subbing in other districts because the, the wait time with S, uh, Santa Rosa City Schools was longer. Kind of to the meat of what I wanted to say. I've been volunteering two days a week at my son's school since pretty much the beginning of the year. I do yard duty and open chocolate milk containers, um, and ask kids to pull up their masks. Um, they all eat outside with the exception of one day that I was working this year when they, some of them ate in hallways. Essentially, it has to be a horizontal wind. They stay dry mostly, but they mostly don't complain. Um, pop-up tents, boy, I, it might be the best we can do, but they blow down. When you get a day where the wind really is blowing sideways, it's going to be tricky. Pool testing, I hope. I'm not sure to what end. I'm not sure that it's going to be useful information in the turnaround time that it takes. Um, especially given that, that COVID tends to go up exponentially and then drop off a cliff. I suspect by the time we have it set up, it will be dropping off the cliff. Um, thank you very much for your work and that's all I've got to say.
Thank you. Uh, next we have a student, Alenzee. Alan, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm a student at Proctor Terrace Elementary. I'm in fifth grade and, um, I sat inside next to all my friends and stuff and I got COVID. And I stayed home for three weeks, missed a lot of school. And I was, at least I catched up on my, my, on my Chromebook, but I felt really sad that I missed a lot of stuff. I missed a winter party and I, and I felt really sad about that. So the, the problem causing that was eating inside and I have a lot of, like, friends, even a little second grader at Proctor Terrace too, who is also like telling people that we should be eating outside more. And Proctor Terrace doesn't have pop-up tents, which I think should be happening because that's the least we can do right now. And that's all I want to say.
Thank you very much for your comment. Uh, next is Linda Cade. Whoops, I am so sorry, Linda. I accidentally pushed Sheila Walker's button. So Lindy, you will be next after Sheila Walker.
Oh, hello, President Sheffield trustees and Superintendent Trunell in the community. Thank you for acknowledging your desire to keep our schools open. I know that that is making a lot of parents, um, happy this evening. Uh, but regarding the proposals that you have before you, my concern is that if it is not a mandate or requirement, why are we, or why is the district going to spend valuable staff resources, which are running short right now, and also, uh, budget, um, resources for these programs? The pool testing, I agree with the speaker, a couple of speakers ahe- ahead of me. Um, I just don't think the turnaround, um, is going to produce much results. Um, by the time it gets started, um, it looks like we'll be on the end of this wave. Um, masking on children during lunch. Um, I, I know there's a lot of parents concerned about that, including myself. And it sounds like that that might be an issue for staff to be constantly, um, trying to manage that as well from another speaker. Maybe focusing more on getting rapid tests would be a better, um, use of our staff and budget resources, um, so that we can use those, uh, for people to return to the classroom sooner or to have tests available at home to make sure that it's safe if someone feels sick. Um, you know, obviously we all need to keep kids home when they're sick. Um, and, uh, it would be nice to be able to take a test and be able to send them back. Um, finally, I just want to mention about, uh, we're going to hear a lot from parents who have children who play sports. Uh, because I think that's, that's gets a lot of people super excited. Of course, my, my kid's sport is, uh, music. Um, so I just want to add in, um, that when we're thinking about the children in our schools, let's think about the arts programs, you know, theater, dance, music. Um, I know, uh, we've had a cancellation already, uh, for a jazz, um, a jazz band performance. Um, and just thinking about these kids, it'll be two years this March for my son, who at that time was in sixth grade. So in those two years for school-
Ms. Walker, I apologize. I was trying to get to the natural end of your sentence, but you have reached the two-minute limit and we do have more people that need to comment. Um, next is Linda Cade.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I appreciate everyone and their time and energy and efforts and all of this. And I'm a parent of a 13-year-old. And I'm discouraged that we're still using social distancing instead of physical distancing because social distancing is such a, um, more of a trauma than just physically distancing for safety in biological, uh, contact. Also, um, Superintendent, if you're expecting to hear back from Dr. Mace, I guess she doesn't do that. And she's being sought after for corruption. And I don't believe we should be taking dicta- dictation from her. She doesn't return inquiries. She doesn't provide information. And she hasn't filed her Form 700 for conflict of interest in these investments. And it's going all the way up to the governor. So there's a big lie that I haven't really figured out yet, but I think it has something to do with COVID and masking athletes. If this board mandates children to mask during athletics, that is child abuse. Children should mask if they feel comfortable masking. Whatever happened to participate at your own risk? I believe if children don't want to mask because they can't breathe or they don't want to inhale their exhaust, that they shouldn't be masking. They want to sit far away. That's fine, but I don't agree with children having to be masked. And all the micromanaging of all the charts and tracking and flow charts. Let's just focus on creating a better environment for our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Gabriella Porter.
Hi, my name is Gabby Porter, um, and I'm a parent of, um, two kids in elementary school. And I just want to also say thank you to, uh, everyone on the board tonight and the superintendent and all the teachers and the subs that have been doing just the absolute best during the situation. Um, just hearing everything tonight, just had a couple of things. Um, I would like to encourage the board to make a temporary position for a director of outside eating for rainy days. That's the best title I can come up with. The district was given millions of dollars for COVID response and they should use that money, um, to make a new position because we all know like how hard everyone's already working and, and no one can do anymore. Um, also, uh, hiring more staff on rainy days, uh, that could be also an option. Hiring the volunteers of the PTA or getting together with the PTA to have people on, on staff to be able to supervise classrooms. Um, and also like, where's the data for the school transmission? Like, we have all this, like, we're gonna make the ma- we're mastering sports. Like, do we have data that says that masks are getting, that the kids are getting COVID during sports? Do we have data to say that they're getting it in the gym? Do we have data to say that they're getting it in the playground? So I'm just curious on like, if the dashboard could start taking some of that data. Um, also, uh, the PCR test, uh, the CDC stopped recommending those on January 12th, if everyone wants to take a look at that. Um, also, just moving away from just COVID restrictions in general, there are other states like Florida um, and California that are going back to life as normal. They're not masked. The teachers are not masked. And their COVID numbers look similar to ours. Um, so just want to encourage just everyone to look around at, to see what other states are doing and kind of we're seeing the end of this, um, this pandemic. Um, also, um, I wanted to say that yeah, I guess that's all I wanted to say. Wait, I was under two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. And next is Joshua Lewis.
Hi, everyone. Uh, thanks for having me tonight. Um, I wanted to introduce myself as a teacher at Elsie Allen High School. Um, to give context through the lens from which I see things. Uh, I wanted to add to the discussion about the school events and, uh, their impact um, with mitigation measures. I want to, um, give special thanks to Superintendent Trunell for proactively contacting Dr. Mace prior to tonight. Um, I thought that's a really cool move to have done that. Um, I think you have your, your, your finger on the pulse of, of what a lot of us want and need. Um, I'm in favor of allowing families to attend school events. Even though I personally, uh, have been in favor of every restrictive mitigation strategy so far, personally. I have children of my own, six, four, and two, and I mask them every time, everywhere. Um, we've not seen family. We've been very, very conservative, um, avoiding this, um, virus. That being said, um, I hope Dr. Mace will consider the importance as she- I hope Dr. Mace will consider the importance as she, you know, gets back to you, Superintendent Trunell. The importance of allowing families to attend sporting events as well as the performing arts performances that were scheduled. Because of their importance for all things related to school. Um, parents are our partners in education. As teachers, the parents are our partners and we need to include them now more than ever to keep our extracurricular programs alive. And our kids involved at school. When there's a really strong relationship between parent support and student's success, we know this, this isn't shocking news. And what we're seeing right now at the high school level, studenting, like adulting, but studenting is, is tough right now. It's clunky. Kids coming to school on time, um, attending every day if they don't feel a hundred percent, participating all the way through. These things that we could get parent support for um is crucial right now and, and uh, as we talk about the safety of the pandemic. That also needs to be considered as parents, as partners, we want them in more now than ever. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Tracy Maniscalco. Tracy, are you there? We'll see if Tracy can unmute. Tracy, are you there? Okay, we are going to move on to John Navarro.
Hello, everyone. Hi, Board. Thank you for letting me speak. Uh, first up, I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you to all of the teachers out there. All the site administrators, all the classified staff, basically everybody that's uh keeping schools alive. Through this just unmitigated disaster. Um, parents, we're really appreciative that you guys just even show up to work every, every day for our kids. So thank you for that. Uh, thank you, school board and superintendent for committing to keep schools open. That's great to hear. Kind of weird after two years, having to kind of grovel and thank everybody for schools to be open, but I get that that's just where we're at right now. Um, first up, I just want to make sure that we get some sort of clarity of any restrictions that you guys might be deciding upon of. How long they're going to be in place. Um, the agenda pack, a packet wasn't very clear. Uh, whatever you guys put on, just make sure that you have a real quick exit plan for when cases drop. We just don't want to feel like you guys are putting something on that's going to stick around forever. It seemed like last year was really hard to dial it back. So we just want to make sure like, are we doing this just for the surge, just as long as public health is giving us guidance? And that's the other thing. We really need more clarity if this is coming from public help. Or if this is coming from private discussions or just things that, you know, the district is just kind of guessing at it. It seems a little bit unclear to me. Um, other than that, thank you, guys. I know this sucks and just keep, keep at it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, next is Jamie and I'm wondering if this might be Jamie Denning, who's already commented on this item. And it appears it is Ms. Denning. Um, so you have already commented. Sorry, we do one per, per person. And back to Tracy Maniscalco. Tracy, are you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank you so much. Sorry, I had a new phone and I was having, had to readjust my microphone settings. Um, but I just want to thank you all um for having this conversation and just to um talk about my perspective. Which I'm a teacher at Montgomery High School. So, hi, Georgia. She used to be in my class. Um. But speaking of sports, um, as teachers, we have to supervise events at school as part of our um adjunct duty. And I've already supervised four different sporting events and um especially in indoor. In the gym, like the kids aren't wearing their masks correctly, not all of them. Now, the ones that we know when we're supervising, if we can say, hey, so-and-so, please put on your mask or please move it back up over your nose. They'll do it, but the ones that we don't know, they don't necessarily listen to us. And some of them will even talk back and say, mind your own effing business and go back to your classroom. Um, again, some, most of those kids are kids that we don't know who don't necessarily go to our school. Um, but it's an issue and right now, in the past two days, forty percent of my students have been absent sick. I get three to five emails a day from these kids telling me that they're sick. And there's a lot of anxiety about feeling like it's back to distance learning during their five-day quarantine. And worried about getting behind and parent emails like reaffirming how they're feeling. And so when it comes to sports, like I really appreciate how we're looking at minimizing the indoor capacity, especially. Where maybe the physical distancing isn't possible. But you know, when the kids are absent at that rate, I mean, I'm one teacher. So you know, it's probably different for other people, but that's a lot of kids. And so I, you know, just to reiterate what the person said before me is that reassessing every couple of weeks. I think is a really good thing because the numbers do go up and they go down really quickly. But especially when we're in a peak, trying to keep the kids in school and also frankly, the.
Sorry, Ms. Maniscalco, but you reached your two minutes and then some and um we have to move on. Next is Natalie Hoy.
Good evening. Can you hear me all right?
It's a little bit soft, but if you could turn up the volume, that'd be great.
Okay, is that better?
Yes.
Okay, once again, I just want to reiterate, thank you so much for keeping schools open. Um, it was really nice to hear from Superintendent Andrew Trunell tonight. I'm really excited to hear that you've ordered more rapid tests and that you're prioritizing that. That was one of my concerns uh for tonight. Will that be the only test will be given or will we receive more of those? So I'm excited to hear those are coming. It would be awesome to know when we can expect those. Um, I also would love some more clarification around the new proposed COVID guidelines. I know you have it broken up into tiers and I'm curious when the different tiers would take effect. I feel like that's been a little bit vague for what would. Um, cause the different tiers to kick in, so to speak. And also things like masking at lunch, which I am opposed to. I'd much prefer to see kids eating outside or um spacing. Or things like that, since they do get so little break from their mask during the school day. Um, and I'm curious, um, one question I have about masking at lunch is would that um. If they are eating outside, does that apply? Um, and then I think it's a little vague too, because you've said that it's more of a recommendation and not something that will be enforced. But I also know that staff and teachers interpret things sort of differently and sometimes teachers will say, you know, they heard that that's a thing now. And they'll ask kids to do it. Some maybe won't, so I'd like more clarification on those things, please.
Thank you. And with that, President Sheffield, there are no other hands raised.
All right. Um, again, thank you to the school community um for sticking with us this evening. And for those who spoke during this very important item, this discussion, we are bringing it back to the board for further questions or emotion on. This as an action item. Um, I see Director McCormick's hand raised.
Um, before we do that, I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting to eleven o'clock.
Okay, time check. It is nine twenty-three right now. Um, we have a motion to extend the meeting. All in favor?
All right.
I don't think we had a second.
I'll second that.
Second, uh, ever florist. I showed hands.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving the, extending the meeting to eleven o'clock and we have um Director Beard.
Um, I just have a comment on the, um, I don't even know that we were talking about. And just talking about um how the students feel about COVID and coming back and then our sports teams. Uh, I think the two crucial things that are very difficult to balance with students, as we know, are our safety with COVID and our mental health as a result. We all want to come back to school. We all want to stay in school. We all want to keep attending. And this is because we have the sense of community in our place. Um, and a huge factor of the sense of community in our schools is sports for us. We've created ser- surveys across the city with thousands of signatures strongly opposing the restrictions. For um keeping students away from watching the games. Uh, athletes have said that competing loses its value with the absence of support in the stands. And with the absence of watching these games, we sort of lose our school spirit and that sense of community that is so motivating during this time. That keeps the school um enjoyable and gives us bonding experiences and is a welcoming place to be. It's inevitable in winter that the COVID cases are going to spike again, just because with the holidays and. We have big families in small quarters and people are getting COVID in their homes. People are getting COVID at parties. People are getting COVID from going to their friend's house. And with a big gym and masks up, we just don't want to lose one of our only semi-normal school experiences.
Thank you, Director Beard. Other questions, comments, uh, or a motion from trustees? Any thoughts on opt-out on pool testing?
I would like to recommend that we change that piece of the pool testing system to an opt-out rather than an opt-in.
Yeah, I, I don't know if I can second that, but that's exactly what.
How, how would that look? Um, uh, Executive Director Mazzara?
Oh, just as, as written, we would then re-change the survey that goes to families. We would talk about the opt-in, um, excuse me, the opt-out. Um, we would make sure we are communicating because there are still families. Our last method was Parent Square. We'd have to make sure that we really do a, a reach out, be fair to communication. Uh, there may be some cer- um, some money around a mail, a mailing that would have to go out just to make sure. If parents are receiving electronic communication, that they have the knowledge to opt out themselves.
Director McCormick?
Um, I would also like to recommend that we remove the thermometer um requirement. Um, I'm strongly in favor of us not making it a mandate for our students to wear masks outside. That it's, we keep it as a strong recommendation, um, but not a mandate. Um, and regarding um the large group. Uh, large public gatherings uh order. Um, I just encourage, I know we're already taking steps, but I want to encourage staff to keep pushing. Um, to get more specific answers. I think some good thinking from the other super, all the superintendents. Um, are coming in right now and um pushing for some possible other options that allow us to safely have some flexibility. And allow, um, you know, some sporting, you know, sporting events with some spectators. And also as well as theater events and other things like that, so that we can try and maintain. Um, especially over the next few weeks and then of course, looking forward as we get deeper into the spring. And hopefully things are getting a little bit better um of what, how we can do this. So I just, I, I know we don't have all the answers yet. I know the questions have been asked back to county, requests have come back to the county. And now we're waiting for a response. I know it's going to be a back and forth, but I just want to encourage that we keep pushing on that. Um, for some flexibility, for some more options and more opportunities.
Thank you, Director McCormick. Uh, Director Manieri?
Um, I would like to see added to the handbook um information about independent study. Um, and I kind of see this document as a, a guiding document for folks and a place where folks can, can go to for resources. And something that um is lacking is um where to go for, where, where on our website. I know you have to fill out the form and go through that process, but how to do that? Um, I would like to see that added in this document if possible. Um, and uh, to direct, to student board member Director Beard's point around mental health. Um, I think it would also be great to see something around mental health resources for our students in this document. Um, like I mentioned earlier, I've been talking to a lot of um specifically middle schoolers about how they're feeling. Um, and, and the reason for that is because my husband's little brother um is in middle school and I get to talk to him and I get to talk to his peers. Um, and, and they know, um, they know that the threshold for going to ru- to remote learning or distance learning has. Um, has more to do with operations, um, and less about how they feel about their safety. And it's having a really big effect on their mental health. So I would also like to see um something around mental health resources added to this document.
All right, um, other board members, any hands? Um, maybe Steve, I, I, you know, I'm just um making sure that I captured all of this and hoping that you are capturing all as well. As suggestions from the board, recommendations to change um the policy on opt-in to opt-out on pool testing. Um, to remove thermometer checks. Um, to circle back um on the indoor sports attendance capacity. Um, and an independent study component.
And the outdoor, not just sports, but outdoor events, so. And outdoor events.
And outdoor events.
So make sure I can capture that, you guys. I'm capturing this line for you and.
I just do want to clarify, um, for President Sheffield. So we provided a list of what we would consider to be the moderate transmission or really what's happening right now. The limit capacity for indoor events, that fifty-one hundred, that is a health order.
Yeah, exactly.
We're not asking the board to take action on that one per se, but more just to acknowledge during our conversation what is currently the directive.
Yes, circling back on the request that came from um the superintendence to health services.
Thank you.
Um, I make sure I'm catching. I said, I did a remind students about the lunch. Uh, is there anything else? I took out require strongly encourage. Please, Board, if I make sure I'm capturing these in real time, then you see the opt-out.
I had, I had a question. Uh, around the kind of daily health screener through Parent Square. Or, or is that uh just through Parent Square or there, are we also using school staff resources? To do the daily health screening, like are there body screening kids? I, I know you mentioned that we've. We've kind of, right, and so that this is a helpful reminder, but I'm wondering, are, are we? Are we feeling like we're slacking on seeing sick kids and not sending them home or parents sending?
Our health screening capacity.
Then I may have not heard all of that, but um we are seeing, there was a lax, that was certainly happening before Christmas. Of students, more and more students coming in with some kind of symptoms. This is the cold season, this is the flu season. So that would be one thing we're looking for, absolutely. The, I think your, your question about uh the level of staff. It is, is simply an app or an email that goes out, comes on a, uh, employees' and families' phone. So that's kind of the level we were doing. There is not a lot of work on the school site. Uh, we developed. At our, at our springtime, uh, a random way to make sure that was happening and call parents and to remind them. And so we would just let the school sites determine what they would do and how they would check that. But that was not going to be too much of an invasive thing from us to, to do that parent screener. And at your discretion, that could be held till the next year.
Okay, um, as we're moving forward through these, I just want to check with the board how we're feeling. Uh, you know, we've made some, some suggestions. Are there, are there any um? Any questions or opposition to the suggestions that, that are being made that Steve is inputting right now in real time? We're all on the same page here?
I, I just wanted to ask if there was anything that. Any, any of these items that may need to like be discussed with any of the labor groups or, or anything? In terms of part of that collaborative process, we go participating in it, or is it cool to just go ahead with these suggestions? And I like them.
Yeah. Uh, Assistant Superintendent Shepherd, if you're seeing anything. The, the rainy day implementation does and we expect that and we, we are prepared and have that to be able to discuss with our association partners. That already does, that's on our radar.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Well, you know, we 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 discussed at the very beginning of this, Steve, I think that you you know, you introduced us as a very fluid document. Um, and that there are changes and modifications and we're doing our best. The public um, you know, needs to know that we are doing our best to address things as they um present themselves. Um, again, we're living in unprecedented times. Um, so we're, you know, here we are in real time, trying to address and adjust and meet the needs of our school community. So I want to thank you. Um, this is an action item. Um, with these modifications, um seeking a motion or further discussion, we have trustee Fong.
I'd like to move that we approve with the modifications we've talked about.
Okay, we had a a motion by uh Director Fong and a second by uh Director McCormick. I think I heard you the loudest. You're a coach.
We're ready for the roll call, President Sheffield?
We are ready for the roll call. Thank you, Adina.
Uh, Director Beard. I think. Okay. Director Manieri, or sorry, Director uh Fong.
Hi.
Director McCormick.
Hi.
Director Manieri.
Hi.
Director De La Cruz. Director Flores.
Hi.
Director Medina.
Hi.
President Sheffield.
Hi. Okay, well, thank you again, um Steve and Melissa Haley-Rick. Um, for uh the presentation and the time you're putting into this and particularly the tracking data that you provided uh for us tonight. Thank you. We are um moving forward on the agenda. Um, agenda item E five, another action item. Uh, resolution number twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-one, criteria to determine. Certificated personnel who shall be exempt from the order of layoff by virtue of their credentials, assignment or certification. Um, the skipping criteria, this um, we have um. Assistant Superintendent uh Shepherd from Human Resources, joining us.
Thank you, President Sheffield, Superintendent Trinell, um members of the board and community. Um, this is an annual item that we bring before you. Um, this is uh related to education code forty-four nine fifty-five D. That authorizes the board to establish criteria based on the needs of the district and the students. Uh, to determine the order of termination, so to speak, if we have to do reduction in force. It's commonly referred to as the skipping criteria. So I present that to you for uh questions and consideration. And I will add that it is unchanged from last year. The criteria you adopted last year is the same we're bringing forward tonight.
Thank you. Uh, questions from the board? Seeing no questions, we will go to um public comment.
If there are members of the public would like to comment on item E five, please raise your hand. There are no hands raised.
Okay, bringing it back to the board for uh comment, further discussion, um questions or emotion? I see uh Director McCormick's hand raised.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution number twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-one. Criteria to determine certificated personnel who shall be exempt from the order of layoff by virtue of their credentials, assignment. Or certification skipping criteria.
I second that.
We have a a motion from Director McCormick, second from Director Fong. Um, any further questions? Are we ready for a vote? Looks as though we are ready for a vote, Adina?
Director McCormick.
Hi.
Director Fong.
Hi.
Director Manieri.
Hi.
Director De La Cruz.
Hi.
Director Flores.
Hi.
Director Medina.
Hi.
President Sheffield.
Hi. Motion passes, moving on to agenda item E six, another action item, resolution. Number twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two, to adopt seniority date tide-breaking criteria. To determine the order of termination among certificated employees with the same date on paid service. Of paid service. And again, um, we have Assistant Superintendent Shepherd.
Thank you, President Sheffield. Um, similarly to the last item, this is an annual item that we bring before you. Um, education code um four-four-nine-five-five authorizes the board to uh consider. Criteria for um how to determine employee, certified employees that are hired on the same day. Uh, essentially, they are ties. So they have the same seniority date. So this different criteria would allow us to establish that criteria and have that order of seniority. Um, so this again is unchanged from last year and we're bringing this for forward for your consideration.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Shepherd. Um, do we have questions, clarifying questions from the board at this time?
I move to approve.
So we're moving on to public comment.
Oh.
That's right.
If there are members of the public would like to comment on item E six, please raise your hand at this time. There are no hands raised.
All right, moving back to the board, Director Flores has made a motion um to approve uh. Uh, agenda item E six, resolution number twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two.
I'll second that.
Okay, we had a second from uh trustee Medina. And I believe we are ready for a vote, Adina?
Director Flores.
Hi.
Director Medina.
Hi.
Director Manieri.
Hi.
Director De La Cruz.
Hi.
Director Fong.
Hi.
Director McCormick.
Hi.
President Sheffield.
Hi. All right, moving along, agenda item E seven. Approval of frontline education, human resources management system, HRMS contract. This, we again have um Assistant Superintendent Shepherd.
Thank you, President Sheffield. Um, tonight before you, uh I have a brief presentation. Uh, to discuss uh this recommendation to purchase and implement and human resources management system. Uh, through frontline technologies. So you allow me one second and I will share my screen. Okay, so I'm going to the next slide. This system will support the entire employee lifecycle. Uh, from recruiting to onboarding throughout the life of uh the employee in our system. And this will streamline and also assist with uh recruiting, and I'll get into a little bit more of that later. Currently, we have several systems in HR that we utilize. Edjoin is the state. Uh, hiring portal for education. We use another system called Inform K twelve, which is document. Really a PDF manager and routing system. Uh, we use uh absence management. Which, by the way, is also a frontline product. As well as Escape is our financial and payroll system is also a frontline product. Target Solutions is a product that we use to uh push out our employee mandated trainings. And then, of course, all of the various paperwork that we do for each employee is uh in a hard copy personnel folder. That we have to keep for forever. Um, so these are multiple systems that require uh our technicians to have hands in all of them. Um, so that necessitates the need for some streamlining. And just, I'm not going to read the entire slide to you, but I'll point out a couple of things. The direct impact of this HRMS system will be to have one central. Um, point of entry for which we operate. So we will have, for example, employees will go, still go on Edjoin. But Edjoin will have a hyperlink to this system where they will actually apply for the job. And so to kind of walk you through, they would apply. And currently, right now, our interview system and application system is manually driven. This will all be automated in this system and it will be um easier for employees. It will be more efficient for hiring managers because they will be able to schedule interviews with this system. Review documents. And so right off the bat, it's going to be a time saver for both um. Managers and then when we start onboarding them, uh we'll get more into that. The, another direct benefit is the employee personnel folder will be in the cloud. Um, as we onboard new employees, their folders will be in the cloud and accessible. Um, and another direct benefit is because this is a, because we're recommending this frontline product. That connects directly with our financial system, Escape. There'll be less data entry by hand because right now our technicians have to onboard them. And then enter hand, enter data into Escape and enter data into absence management. And that will all be one single point of entry. So that's also going to be a time saver. Um, we'll also be able to track all of the various forms that employees have to sign uh digitally. And it, this, this will be uh through a workflow approval process, it's all automated. And along the way, we'll be able to find where our choke points are, where are we slowing down? Is there a form that was missed? We'll be able to see that in real time. So that also will speed up. Um, the hiring process, which of course, that's something we're always interested in. Um, for payroll, less uh manual entry by HR is uh. Uh, obviously is less uh opportunity for human error. It will also be direct connected. Uh, right now, um, we have to manually enter some salary information when we hire. But because this will be connected to the HR system will be connected to Escape, the information will pre-populate. So we'll have much more real-time uh access and data and a lot more visibility. And the reconciliation process will be much easier to, for us to uh manage. For employees, I kind of mentioned that this will be a single login look uh uh environment. So employees will be able to eventually see their personnel file. We're going to link it with our frontline product, our uh professional development module, which will also. Um, work with our absence management. It's mobile and iPad tablet friendly. So it's pretty much device agnostic. It'll work in the cloud. And you can, you could essentially onboard on your phone if you, if that was a a convenient place for you to do that. The district impact, we are not anticipating any reduction of HR staff, even though we will see a marked um improvement in efficiency. Um, uh, just as an aside, I have experienced successfully implementing a similar process in my last role. My last district. And I will, from experience, will tell you that we um had much, much greater. Um, efficiency, which led to better customer service. Technicians are able to spend more time with uh prospective employees and have more time to assist current employees with questions. And less, less lag time for response because there'll be less time uh um with paper and manually driven processes. Um, eventually, we will get to electronic time cards for various things that employees turn in. And as you can imagine, uh sometimes those time cards are in district mail and there's an error, they have to be sent back. There's a lag time sometimes in payment, but with this electronic submittal, principals and managers will be able to authorize them. In real time, if there's a mistake, they can send it back electronically. And there's just a lot more uh throughput and uh speed with those things. As I mentioned earlier, single sign-on, one password for all of these things, which will make that. I don't know about you, but I have a lot of passwords to remember, so the less we have to deal with, the better. Um, here is just a representation, uh for those of you who like visual. Um, eventually Escape will also be in the cloud, which will be a huge benefit. And Escape is what SCO uses. So this is a county, you know, most districts in the county use, use Escape. So by us using frontline, the HRMS system, as you see in this, the center. It will talk to all of our other uh modules, a professional growth module. We're also going to have time and attendance for time cards for things like uh overages, extra duty pay. Things like that, we'll be able to to do that electronically. Um, also, a great, HRMS has great position management, which will allow HR to. Uh, be able to pivot quicker for information requests. Uh, for both you, the board members, and for the superintendent will be able to be in a position to access data. Uh, in a more efficient way because all of these systems will be talking together. This is a pretty aggressive timeline. Um, uh, assuming we get approval, we are ready to launch. Um, with our um project management team from frontline. And these are um estimates, of course. Um, the great thing about doing them in segments is we can go as fast or slow as our system can handle. As you imagine, this is a um, a huge endeavor, so we're going to have to proceed carefully. To involve all of our stakeholders, our different departments, how we're going to interface. We're going to be having lots of conversations with uh both SRTA and CSEA. And bringing them along and uh working through different things. So um, I'm estimating that we could have this fully launched by July, but we don't have to. Um, we don't need, we don't have to rush this for the sake of having it ready. We can, we can uh implement as we get it ready, as we've piloted, and we're confident that um. What we want to put in front of everyone will uh be productive. And uh just a couple of quotes from other districts who have um had experience with frontline. And with that, I will entertain any questions you have.
Great, fabulous. Thank you so much, Mike. A whole lot of efficiency and ready to hit the ground running upon approval, of course. Um, questions from the board? I see um Director Fong's hand raised and then Director Manieri.
I really like how you are looking at the systems and um definitely upgrading them, it sounds like. I'm unclear as to uh cost differential with the other four systems or five systems we're using in this one in terms of um. Annual operating costs.
That's an excellent question. Um, thi- this is definitely a little, that will be an increase in in yearly operating cost. Um, thank, thankfully, we have semester funds that we budgeted uh for the first three years. But we are going to um. By realizing uh not paying for targets, for example, um. Inform K twelve, those other programs, the cost will go down. What the net is, is probably a save, not a savings, but when we look at the hundred and fifty thousand dollar price. Average and just ballparking, and we deduct the cost of these other systems, we're that, we're back down to about. Sixty thousand, sixty to seventy thousand. So there will, there, there will be a reduction. With not paying for some of those systems.
So the net outcome would. So the net outcome would be a reduction under one umbrella?
I think you froze up.
I think I froze up.
No, you're good. I think Assistant Superintendent Shepherd froze.
Okay, who's on first now?
I apologize. I think I froze.
I think my follow up. Mike is so. The net result would be that we are saving money or you said sixty thousand dollars extra?
Yeah, it's gonna be the, there's gonna be an extra cost yearly by putting this system in. There's no question. But the, the. The savings, if you will. Is it that really can't be quantified is the time. And the customer service and onboarding employees quicker. That's a cost that is very, a very good thing for us. Getting people in front of kids sooner and supporting.
Alright, thank you.
And Trustee Manieri.
Yeah, we've heard a lot this evening about how difficult it is to. To become a substitute teacher in our district. So I'm wondering if frontline offers any kind of. If it'll impact that process in any way, if we'll see things move a little bit quicker on that front.
Yes, I I definitely think onboarding all employees, including substitutes, the time will improve. There are still some things with our substitutes that go through SCO. And so we can, you know, I have, I'm having conversation with SCO about how we can. Improve those offerings of when they have their orientations. And we're going to keep exploring that because we certainly want our substitutes onboarded as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
Trustee De La Cruz.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Shepherd. We've also heard a lot about. You know, expanding the outreach for postings. And would just love to know how this system might also facilitate our being able to do that.
Yeah, thank you. We use Edjoin, that is the state. Pretty much the only player in town, you know, statewide for education postings. For some of our other jobs, we use Indeed and we use other avenues. With the frontline system, they also have a national. Database, a job posting system that we will automatically be in having this system. So that will increase our reach even more so than with Edjoin. And that will give us some opportunity to, for example, with that national system. We can do a search and it had Edjoin does not have this capability, but. This this national search engine will allow us to invite. For example, let's say we're looking for a school psychologist. We could send out a mass invite to anyone in the system who has said. They're a psychologist and they're and they're interested in employment. So we can invite people to apply. So this will increase our reach.
Thank you.
And Trustee Flores.
Yeah, thank you, President. Should I feel, you know, another thing that I've heard from, you know, from friends and teachers here in in Santa Rosa is that. It takes. Quite a bit of time, not just for subs, but for. People who have been, you know, hired to get their. Offers out and then once the offers are out for them to get returned. So is this system going to, you know, streamline streamline that sort of. Process to make sure that those, you know, offers go out in a timely manner that what we're not, you know, losing to. You know, some teachers to or anyone to a competitor.
Yeah, so yes, it will absolutely increase and increase our efficiency. Sometimes there's onboarding lag for various reasons. Just with the the simple matter of all of the forms that need to be reviewed and signed. With this system, our technicians will be able to look up in real time and see what's the status of people. Having form completion. So we'll be able to track. And really keep a good pulse on is is a particular employee. Higher having an issue or having having difficulty. And so that that will that I saw that increase in my last district. I saw it increase a lot and I'm confident that we will experience similar results here.
And is there a way to compare the results with what we currently have in terms of efficiency? I mean, I know this is a big ask, but is that something to do?
Well, we can certainly explore that and as we start. We'll have to, when we get familiar with the system and it's up and running. Well, we we will be able to to kind of anecdotally look at that data.
So I see, I did see a two year implementation timeline, right? Could we get like an update, you know, you know, eight months from now or something like that to see how how things are going? Because this is taking effect when. This is taking effect now, right?
Well, assuming assuming it's approved, we will start meeting with. They will assign us an implementation manager and a team. And we will start implementing modules, the, you know, per the timeline. As we're, so some things will will start implementing when they're done. So full rollout, I'm anticipating July, August. Of this year, of this next school year. So we should have mostly implemented by by August.
So I I like to see like towards the end of, you know, next year, probably, you know, a a follow up to see how things are going and if they're working out. Okay.
Certainly.
Great, thank you.
Other questions from the board? This is an investment, but it seemingly comes with some pretty hefty amenities. At this time, Mike, do you have a sense of where? SRTA or CSEA are? How do they feel about this proposed transition?
Yes, I've I've spoken with both groups and both groups are very supportive. Of anything we can do to streamline, make things more efficient. And particularly some of the transparency that will realize from. Employees being able to, for example, at any time, look at their personnel folder online. They'll be able to see all their documents. Now that will be a multi-year process to. Get existing files uploaded into the system. That will be later conversations, but that's just one example.
Great. All right, thank you. Let's move to public comment. Medina, if we have any takers or bad, sorry.
If there's anyone in the public who'd like to comment on item E seven, please raise your hand. And Tracy Maniscalco would like to comment.
Hey, and thank you again for hearing me and I'm really glad to hear that. Purchasing something that is going to help streamline the hiring process and make it go faster. Is looking at being hap, is looking, you're looking into making that happen. But what I would like the board to look into is what is going to get these jobs posted faster? Because processing applications faster is not going to be useful if we're not more competitive and offering our jobs sooner. We've had a few student teachers too that I can think of off the top of my head in the past five years. That have really liked working in our district and at our sites. And they had job applications in in two different districts and were interviewed. Before our job was ever advertised. And we lost both of them because they needed jobs and they didn't want to turn down an offer when our job wasn't even posted yet. And so it would be a shame to spend all this money. And processing applications if we're not more competitive at getting our jobs advertised sooner. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mica Carlin Goldberg.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to say that I'm really hopeful that this transition to the system will be beneficial. But past history makes me nervy. The transition from whatever it was we were using for student information system before illuminate and into illuminate was terrible. The transition from illuminate into Aries was very rocky. You know, I. Yes, we use a lot of frontline systems. Aesop was. Bought by frontline and I think it was actually easier to use before frontline owned it. My learning plan was bought by frontline and we use that for our PD and it's wretched. It's terrible on the back end for people to load things. You can't search through it like. I I really hope that this is the right choice. For for making things so we can actually be competitive and get job offers up and get offers out. I I mean, the the what the previous speaker was talking about, when I got hired in this district was six, seven years ago. The only reason I'm working in this district is because somebody at the school said it's coming. And I waited because I liked the people there. Because I was applying all over the place and I would get stuff, so I would put in the applications. And get interviews faster than our district. I just. I worry about the efficiency and about the actual transition and I really hope it does what you say it's going to, but past history of. This computer system is going to fix everything and then the reality, it doesn't match the the hopes. So. I I hope that this does what you say it is going to do, but I'm not. Confident that it will. Thank you.
Thank you, President Sheffield. There are no other hands raised.
Thank you. Let's bring it back to the board for further discussions, additional questions or a motion. I see trustee Flores's hand raised.
Yeah, so um, in terms of what Mica mentioned, what what is it that we're doing? To make sure that it it turns out to be a smooth transition because. He's right. I remember the transition between, you know, illuminate to Aries, you know. We had this conversation and and it sounded like it was going to be a smooth transition and then ended up ended up not being a smooth transition. So and then Mike, Mr. Shepherd, I think you mentioned that you have experience. With this sort of transition, can you speak a little bit about this and and your experience with, you know, transitioning, you know, from one system to the next?
Sure. Yeah, in in my last role, in my last district, we went from a completely. Paper environment to a nearly paperless environment. And it was an eight month transition that the and it went very well. If I do say so myself, but I think mainly largely in part to. Because this is the back end of the system, most employees won't see the direct changes. Unlike Aries, which, you know, everyone touches every day and it's student driven. This is going to be a lot more backend environment for payroll, fiscal, HR. And then once we're ready with each module, we will pilot. We will test it and then we will start rolling it out. It will, it will mostly, the most of the changes will will be felt. By brand new employees who have known nothing else once we launch. So that the the part where we will, where employees will see a big difference. Is when we automate the evaluation process. But once again, we will pilot that with a couple of people. We'll make sure we shake out the bugs. And we have, we'll have that luxury because we're not unlike Aries where you had to go from one thing. All in to the next, we can implement. Us in stages as we're ready. So I think it's going to be a little bit different process and I think we'll have the opportunity to. Quote unquote, get it right before we press go.
Alright, thank you.
Trustee Fang.
I'd like to move approval of the. Frontline Education Human Resource Management System contract.
Okay, we have a motion from Director Fong, a second from Director McCormick. Looks like we are ready for a vote.
Director Fong.
I.
Director McCormick.
I.
Director Manieri.
I.
Director De La Cruz.
I.
Director Flores.
Hi.
Director Medina.
Hi.
President Sheffield.
Hi. Motion passes. Don't go anywhere, Mike, because we have another agenda item, E eight, action item. Approval of a memorandum of understanding reached with Santa Rosa City Schools and the Santa Rosa Teachers Association regarding home. And hospital alternative work assignments.
Thank you, President Sheffield, Superintendent Trinell, members of the board. That we reached agreement back in November on this MOU and. We are bringing this to you. Due to our collaboration with SRTA. The home and hospital teachers. While their caseloads, when their caseloads are a little lower, they wanted some flexibility. To be able to help with student engagement for the independent study program. So this agreement allows us to have them assist us in that and we're very grateful for that. So I'll entertain any questions that you may have.
Questions from the board. I see trustee Fong's hand raised.
Sorry. Leftover.
All right, I see trustee Flores's hand raised.
Yes, I don't know where I read this from, but um. Does this MOU also include the extra scaffolding services or support services for our independent study students? That have selected to go to independent studies, independence due to AB one thirty?
Yes, correct. It does, it it does absolutely give flexibility for. For these teachers to help assist with engagement. And they'll, they will, yes, they will work with Matt Dunkel and his group to. Assist as needed with students who are having, who need some extra support engaging in the independent study.
I see it. Alright, thank you.
Further questions from the board? Seeing none, moving on to public comments. If we have members of the public.
Any members of the public who would like to comment on item E eight, please raise your hand at this time. There are no hands raised.
Thank you. Bringing it back to the board for discussion or questions or a motion. I see trustee McCormick's hand raised.
I would just like to make a motion to approve E eight, the approval of the MOU reached with Santa Rosa. City Schools and Santa Rosa Teachers Association regarding home and hospital alternative work assignment.
Second.
We have a motion and the second came from trustee Flores this time. I think we are ready for a vote.
Director McCormick.
I.
Director Flores.
I.
Director Manieri.
I.
Director De La Cruz.
I.
Director Fong.
I.
Director Medina.
I.
President Sheffield.
I. All right, now we are motion passes, moving on to agenda item E ten. No, I'm sorry. E nine, discussion independent study update and we have Dr. Armstrong. And and Director Dunkle with us.
Perfect, thank you. President Sheffield, members of the board, Superintendent Trinell and members of Santa Rosa City Schools. Perfect, thank you. President Sheffield, members of the board, Superintendent Trinell and members of Santa Rosa City Schools, including guests. My name is Dr. Kimberly Armstrong. Good evening, Happy New Year. I do want to make sure that Matthew Dunkle is brought over. Um, so that we can kick off this presentation and I will share my screen now. See.
Doctor Armstrong, uh, Mr. Dunkle is on his way over.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Um, let's see, I think I have. Alright, I don't see my face bar, but I assume that you all can see the shared screen.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Alright, well, this is our update for independent study, Assembly Bill AB one thirty. It's important that we emphasize that because this is our one year only independent study program. This is far as we know at this point. So some things I know that you already know, I remember when we talked about this last year, we were under consideration of two programs. We did land on Acelus. Um, Acelus is our online provider of content for students. Um, pre K through twelve. We have teachers, we have a uh, over a dozen teachers who are supporting with the endeavor. I thought that it was important to pause and, but you see the breakdown of the FTE, so. The one one point oh, meaning that we have one teacher teaching full time, the K eight through first grade students in independent study. Um, same for second and third. And then the six dash point two, we have six teachers teaching point two of their contract. Um, for fourth through sixth graders and so on and so forth. You will be able to see that our our largest. Population of teachers are teaching point two for ninth through twelfth graders. And then I do just want to point out that we do have um, one teacher teaching point four of independent study, but that's because. Um, they had a partial assignment, they were under one point oh to begin with. So that's how the the staffing breaks down. The other thing that I think it's important to note are our numbers, so enrollment. So back in September, we were at three hundred and thirty-three students. And as of January third, we're at four oh three, I can tell you since the testing. Um, and over the last week, we are um. Sixty above that number at least and we're anticipating that we'll probably reach five hundred by the end of the month. So definitely some growth. As you can see, there is um. A ton of growth at the secondary level, specifically that eleventh and twelfth grade level. And while we don't necessarily have data on why that is the case. Um, we're just happy to be able to keep our upperclassmen in school and engaged in learning. So I have a couple of slides on just our um, breakdown by enrollment. And this is as of September third. Um, so you probably know, I'm sure, and for our public that our. Population of students who are students of color in the elementary is about seventy-five percent. And at the secondary, it's about sixty-eight percent. So basically what the slide shows is that the enrollment in independent study. It mirrors our enrollment in Santa Rosa City Schools. So from September to January third, um, not a ton of difference, maybe some slight increases, five to six percent. Um, for our students who are identified as white and I think that that was perhaps the largest jump. So just to be able to see that our students who are enrolled in independent study matches. Our district enrollment. And I would definitely say the same about um. ELL, um, maybe even slightly less, you know, at the secondary level, our ELL. Population, our emergent bilingual population is twelve point nine percent, where our elementary is thirty percent. And that most of our students are secondary, so um, it falls about where we're at as a system, give or take. Um, and then special education, um, so. You know, we we do have a a chunk of students who are served through special ed. This is not based on total enrollment. Of um, our. Program, I guess, across the board. It's, we're we're still working through this number. Um, but I will say students with IEPs are, they do need to go through a process with their case managers and an IEP meeting to determine if. AB one thirty um, is a good fit. And so the question that we have is on the sample size, so I I can't speak. Um, if this is out of the uh, four hundred at this point, but it does show our students who are. Um, identify as students with IEPs. And then this slide here just shows enrollment by school site. It's just quickly showing you a a glimpse of. Where we have the most students who are enrolled in independent study by the school site that they are connected with. Um, on through our our um, sites with the lowest amount of students. So what I'll say before turning it over to um, Director Dunkle is um. You know, our feelings in Ed Services about um, Acelus. It's definitely meeting the need. I mean, Acelus curriculum is. Um, A through G and they are accredited, um, and the content is um, robust. Especially when you include the special lessons and um, Director Dunkle will speak a little bit more about what students are saying and get some impressions that way. But what I'll also offer is that um. It doesn't necessarily meet our standard in educational services because we've been working on this past year on some shifts. Um, and one of those shifts is really being dialed into data. And the unfortunate part is that I'm only able to provide you with very simplistic numbers when it comes to Acelus because we don't have demographic data. In our system and um, I think as soon as the semester grades are processed and we're able to pull some reports out of Aries. Then we'll be able to look closely at the data from um, those who are enrolled in independent study and and to see how they're progressing in terms of. Um, the overall credit attainment. Um, I will say that Acelus does offer some reports on attendance. It offers some reports for teachers based on how students are progressing, but there isn't a dynamic dashboard or an early warning system. Where we're able to then further analyze how students are doing and even do. Um, some equity analysis on um, on progress, you know, some of the things that we wonder. What is, what is the profile of a student who is successful um, in Acelus? Like who are they? What's their background? What side are they tied to? Or do they involved in? And what are some elements that are are contributing to their success? And then drilling down a little deeper and applying that across our students. Because one of the other shifts that we're completely committed to is our MTSS work. And making sure that we are providing students as we get those early warnings about how they're. Doing and tracking and perhaps maybe even not tracking and in need of re-engagement. That we have an abundance of information that we're able to make decisions on. And then the only other thing that I wanted to say before I turn it over to Director Dunkle is that it's important to note. That in our system currently, we have of course, the school program, Bridgeway. And then we have the um, program over at Piner, which is embedded inside of a school to support our students. Who are credit deficient and in need of alternative support. So for our students who are um. Matriculating through school, they're on track with credits. And they need an alternative environment or for whatever reason. Um, maybe anxiety, uh, maybe there was some trauma that was experienced. I don't, don't want to generalize or. Um, put students in certain categories, but I will say that um, the only program that we have right now is Acelus and. While Acelus was created to support students um, who need an alternative environment in the midst of of COVID and a pandemic. We anticipate that students that need an alternative environment won't go away and so we've been engaging in conversation. Um, to figure out what our next steps are and um, at least to make a recommendation to our superintendent on. Um, how to continue some support. At this point, the state has not said anything about AB one thirty. Independent study continuing on for twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, but we certainly don't want to be in a situation like August where we're building the plane in flight. And it's a pleasure, as you all know, I love to sing my team praises. I think they're worthy of it and they do amazing work. And um, someone who is also out there doing amazing work is Matthew Dunkle, who serves as our director. And unfortunately, I can't see any faces, so I don't, I am hoping he's in the room so that I can pass it over to him.
Well, thank you, Dr. Armstrong. I appreciate that.
Matthew, may I ask, am I driving or do you want, or do you want me to stop and you share?
Uh, why don't I share? That'll just be easier.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. One second here. Okay. There we go. Alright, thank you for your patience. So at at the end of the semester, um, the Ed Services team. Um, along with Corey Lotte, teacher at Maria Creo High School, uh, worked to put together um, a survey. And so the survey went out to, um, as you can see, we've got seventy-seven responses and a few of breakdown. Um, from it. And so we've got some preliminary um, data just from students, which we found is uh, pretty insightful. And so we've chosen a few of these uh, highlight as we go through here. Alright, so some of the questions that we've asked um. Were, you know, how is Acelus, what they're learning in Acelus? How is that comparing to what um, they've believed they would be learning in the classroom? Um, and so, you know, the majority are definitely saying, you know, it it's about the same. Um, and and the the next group would say they're actually learning more through Acelus. Um, you know, because of this. Now, a lot of that reason is um, because it's self-directed. Um, they have the ability to. Um, go back and review material in Acelus. Um, they've also identified that, you know, there's not the classroom disruptions. That are happening there, they themselves don't find themselves distracted by being in a social setting and they're able to focus more. Um, on this and so, so those are some of the reasons why they feel like that they're they're learning more. Um, through the Acelus or the same. Uh, making progress in Acelus and in progress through Acelus is is sort of the main point of how how the students um, growth, academic growth is measured. And um, most of the students, you know, feel like that they're making some good progress as Dr. Armstrong mentioned, you know, once the. Uh, semester grades get processed um, and finalized, we'll be able to look at that data, look at those data to determine, you know, what what are the outcomes? Um, for our students. Um, you know, some, some students, you know, they feel like, eh, maybe, maybe some of their courses are struggling and and we've noticed that. Um, for for most students that have identified a course in which they're struggling, it tends to be math. Um, which is, you know, fairly appropriate with, you know, even even the classroom um, challenges that we're facing. Um, in with math in in the district and and beyond as well. No, it's it's a pretty simple um, program to learn to use. It's very straightforward. Um, so there's not a whole lot of um, sort of ramping up that needs to occur. Students. Get a um, student orientation video that they go through, um, and then and then they're off to the to the races. You see, the overwhelming majority would recommend Acelus to other students. Um, again, you know, a lot of that's around, you know, they think it's an ease of use. They like the independence. They like the self-directedness of it. They like the ability to go back and re-watch um, the instructional videos to go back and do. Um, some of the problems over again, some of the exams over again. Uh, they like how Acelus sort of adjusts to their progress as well, so. I, you know, the students who are in the independent dis-independent study program do find it um, at this point out of the, out of our sample size. Um, to be um, something that they would recommend and they are thus far, you know, happy with. So we were curious, so students who did choose this, how were they doing socially? Um, and so we have a majority that. Say, yes, they've got some, some really positive um, social interactions outside. Because again, being part of uh, the ISP AB one thirty, students are still affiliated with their homeschools and they still um, are. Um, able to utilize all the services that are available at their home site. So some students actually do still participate. Um, in uh, events at their sites, but then they're also involved in um, you know, other activities outside of school. Um, some are happy with how it's going. They're fine that, you know, they don't need a lot of interaction. They've got their social group and and that's working for them. Um, but we do see that they know there's about, you know, fourteen percent that said, well, you know, we're getting a little bit, but you know, it'd be nice to see some more. And that was some of the comments too around, you know, improvements around Acelus. That student said is they kind of missed that classroom discussion aspect, um, that that interaction with their peers. Um, in a classroom environment to be able to talk and discuss um, different uh, topics that are being discussed in their classes. They do feel supported. They feel like that, you know, the overwhelming majority feel like that they are getting, you know, ample support. Um, from their ISP teacher, um, that our ISP teachers are doing a great job. Um, working with their, with their students, um, checking on their students, monitoring their progress, helping them move forward with their work. You know, working with counselors, working with uh, the Ed Services team to identify um, any needs that may be arising. Um, students who are disengaged, uh, we've been working with the SAFE program. Um, Sidney Smith and her team to help do home visits with students who may have been disengaged. Um, so um, there's a lot of support that does occur when we do get feedback. We'll also work directly with the schools, um, principals, counselors, vice principals. Um, to let them know some of the feedback we're receiving where students may be struggling or sharing, um, you know, the challenges and concerns that they're having. Just a couple of observations um, that we've come up with. Other students say, you know, it's it's a safe learning environment for students and families. They, you know, they are able to go and and, you know, continue their education. Um, you know, safely without any fear or threat to to their safety and well-being or those family members with um, whom they're living. Um, it's an educational alternative. It's it's not the traditional model and and a lot of the students in the survey responded that this was. One of the, you know, biggest reasons why they enjoyed it. It was, you know, it allowed them to, you know, sort of be self-directed to to manage their time. Um, to work at times when it was convenient for them. Um, and so it was a good model um, for a lot of our students. Um, you know, it's 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 a fluid program, so we do have students who actually have. Entered, exited and re-entered the program. Um, and so it it does provide that opportunity for students and families. To sort of continue their education, especially in these uh, very sort of unstable times with COVID. Um, so this is a great opportunity for our students. As I mentioned already, they're self-directed and, you know, they have a connection with, you know, a Santa Rosa City Schools teacher. So there's, you know, every, every student in um, ISP AB one thirty meets with um, a Santa Rosa City Schools teacher at at least once a week for an hour, if not more. Um, but at a minimum and and as I mentioned earlier, many of our, if not a all of our um, ISP teachers. You know, do regular check-ins through email when they're not meeting, you know, at their Zoom sessions.
Uh, Director Dunkle looks like.
Director Dunkle, looks like trustee De La Cruz has her hand raised, as does trustee Flores.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, President Sheffield. My question was, you know, I noticed the, the findings around flexibility. Do we have any way of understanding what time kids are doing their studies? Is this working for kids who are working? Do we see that kids who are working, you know, jobs and also going to school? Are we, are we able to track the hours that they're on?
Yes, one of this, one of the survey questions, and I'm sorry to do include it in here, was exactly that. When we sort of, we broke it up into chunks of time throughout the 24-hour cycle of when students are doing their work. And it does vary. The most of, the most of our students are doing it more in that traditional school day. But we do have some that are doing it at two o'clock in the morning. And, you know, that's, that's where they're, they're finding, you know, the best time to get their work done. So they, they are using all 24 hours in the day to engage in their learning. And they are able to, you know, engage in their learning around maybe, you know, familial responsibilities if they're working, their work schedule. So they do have that flexibility throughout, throughout the week, you know, to, to, to choose when they are going to engage in, in their, in their education.
It looks like trustee Flores has his hand raised as well.
Yeah, you, you mentioned that some students enter, exit, re, and re-enter the program. How are we keeping track that these students are not falling further behind? Okay, that's question one. And then I'm going to ask the second question. I was reading AB 130 also the other day. And part of it says that, you know, satisfactory sort of educational program, you know, will trigger some sort of evaluation. Has that been happening? And then what is that progress threshold that triggers that, that evaluation?
Yeah, to, to address the, the first question, it's, it's a lot of communication. When students do exit, we archive their existing work. So it doesn't go away through a cellus. It's not lost. It's still captured within a cellus. And then the communication happens depending on the grade level with counselors, with principals, with vice principals to, to ensure that, you know, that, that transition in and out and in and out, which is, is there, there aren't many students who have done that. But it is again, making sure that those communications exist with the sites and with, with the program to ensure that students, you know, are being, you know, that it makes sense for students to return or to exit, as well as to ensure that, you know, when they're coming back, we know where they're at, how they're performing, if they've gone back to the site. And then we also work with our, the ISP teacher who has already been assigned to that student. So a lot of us through the communication piece. I think at this point, we're going to, what we're looking at is getting to that point to where we're going to start looking at, you know, how is successful has the program been? As Dr. Armstrong mentioned, it's, you know, it is sort of a constant sort of evaluation of it. But there hasn't been sort of, you know, that deep dive into the program at this point to determine, you know, where, you know, where it's at and how it's performing. I think a key, a key indicator really for us is also going to be not only the, the engagement piece, but also the semester grades, when we can start to see and really have a sense of how students have been performing in this, in this first semester.
And one of our benchmarks is 60% to trigger the re-engagement process. And that's as written in our AB 130 MOU with SRTA.
Okay, thank, thank you. I forgot about that.
Okay, I'm just going to do a quick time check. It's 11:40 right now. We have a lot of agenda to continue with.
It's 10:40.
10:40. 10:40. And we, we are, we have made a commitment to, to conclude the meeting by 11:00. So I'm looking to move, move along quickly as we can forward.
I think we're going to have to readjust the agenda, President Sheffield.
Yes, let's take care of our action items as they come up. We'll finish this discussion item to the best of our ability. We have an action item. And then we, we will, we'll do a check and see about adjusting the agenda. So let's finish the discussion item here.
President Sheffield, that concludes the presentation.
That was quick. Okay, questions, clarification from the board?
I just have one thing.
Yes, continue.
I want to thank, thank Director Dunkle and Assistant Superintendent Armstrong for the report and for the monitoring and execution of IS the way we have it with the cellus. And I love the comments about alternative ways to do education. So I'm, I'm also wondering, and you don't need to answer, but I'm sure you thought about this. Why are kids in this, you know, it was a COVID thing, but why are kids choosing this? Why are kids choosing other ways? And let's keep serving them in all the ways they need to. But thank you so much, especially Director Dunkle, your first report, I think, to us.
Thank you very much. I've enjoyed my time.
Thank you, trustee Fong. Other questions from the board? Before we go to public comment? All right, let's move along to public comment.
Any members of the public who'd like to comment on item E9, please raise your hands. There are no hands raised.
All right, back to the board for any discussion. This is a discussion item, so discussions or continued questions? Okay, seeing none, we do have an action item. Item E10, a resolution to appoint Matthew Dunkle to the Adult Education Program, Member Participation and Sonoma County Adult Education Consortium Oversight Committee. Dr. Armstrong?
Yes, thank you. It's our, our proposal. It falls under Matthew Dunkle's responsibility. And we put forth to the board for consideration, I'm taking action to appoint him to the committee.
All right, do we have any questions from the board? I see trustee Fong's hand raised.
I move to approve that appointment for Director Dunkle to this committee.
Okay, let's hold that motion, see if there's public comment.
Any members of the public who'd like to comment on item E10, please raise your hand. No hands raised.
All right, moving back to the board, motion from trustee Fong. Okay, moved and seconded by trustee McCormick. Looking for a vote, Adina?
Director Fong.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Flores.
Aye.
Director Medina.
Aye.
President Sheffield.
Aye. Okay, we've concluded that matter of business. Now we have a, a couple of discussion items left on the agenda, agenda item E11 and E12. Any suggestions for adjusting this agenda?
I'd like to move that we move on to consent items and then return to the final two discussion items.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion from Director Medina, second from Director De La Cruz, to move on to consent items before returning to conclude discussion. We are ready for a vote.
Aye.
Point of order.
Point of order.
Um, President Sheffield, would you like to roll call vote or all in favor?
Let's just do an all in favor.
Aye.
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 Any opposition? Okay. Seeing none, moving on to consent items. 1 through 14, we had two polled items, F8 and F11 by the public.
I'd like to move to approve F2 through F7, F9 and F10 and F12 through F14.
Second. Okay. Moved by Director Medina, seconded by Director De La Cruz for the approval of the F items with the exception of F8 and F11. Looking for a vote.
Director Medina.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director Fong.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Flores.
Aye.
President Sheffield.
Aye. Okay, now circling back to F item eight polled by the public for discussion.
Thank you, President Sheffield. It looks like CSCA 75 would like to comment, and I believe that's Mary Lehman. Mary, are you there? Thank you.
Thank you, President Sheffield, Superintendent Trinell, members of the board, the teachers and the community. CSCA 75 supports the reclassification of the childcare assistance. We encourage you to support this reclassification. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mary.
Move to approve the proposed reclassification of CSCA Chapter 75 Childcare Assistance.
Second.
All right, we have moved by trustee Medina, seconded by trustee De La Cruz for approval of proposed reclassification of California School Employees Association.
Director Fong, do you have a question or is your hand up? No, okay.
Director Medina.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director Fong.
Aye.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Flores.
Aye.
President Sheffield.
Aye. Second polled F item F11 approval of proposed increase of minimum wage polled by the public.
Any members of the public who'd like to comment on F11 who are still with us at this time? Let's raise your hand. And I believe the person who wanted that poll is no longer in the meeting, so there are no hands raised.
Okay, back to the board seeking for a motion on item F11.
Move to approve item F11 approval of proposed increase of minimum wage.
Second.
Moved by trustee McCormick, seconded by trustee Manieri, seeking a vote, Medina?
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Fong.
Aye.
Director Flores.
Aye.
Director Medina.
Aye.
President Sheffield.
Aye. Okay, we are moving back. We have 15, 14, 13 minutes to move back to item. I'm sorry.
We also have the minute. We also have the minutes. I don't know if you want to do those. Or just wait till then.
Let's take care of those now. I'm, I'm sorry, my, my agenda is freezing up. I'm, I'm going to move over to our approval of minutes. Okay, we're going to adjust again to agenda item G, approval of minutes. We have G1, approval of minutes of the regular board meeting held on December 8th, 2021.
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by trustee McCormick, seconded by trustee De La Cruz.
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director Fong.
Aye.
Director Flores. Director Medina.
Aye.
President Sheffield.
Aye, thank you, Adina. And G2, approval of minutes of the special board meeting held on December 15th, 2021.
Move to approve G2.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved by trustee McCormick, seconded by trustee Fong for the approval of special board meeting held on December 15th, 2021. Adina, ready for a vote?
Director McCormick.
Aye.
Director Fong.
Aye.
Director Manieri.
Aye.
Director De La Cruz.
Aye.
Director Flores.
Aye.
Director Medina.
Aye.
President Sheffield.
Aye. Okay, we have two agenda items, if I'm correct. Agenda item E11, which is a, the Panorama Survey, and we have agenda item E12. I'm looking to the board for how we should approach these in the next 10 minutes.
Is there a recommendation from Superintendent Trinell? Because I don't want to rush anything or...
Exactly. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. The Panorama Survey presentation is an important one as we bring forward information to the board around social, emotional learning and needs. However, given the timeframe of, I don't think that we would be able to give it justice, knowing the data and information that we would like to discuss. In addition, the trustee area map, I know that this is a discussion item that the board has been very interested in. We are very grateful to have Mr. Foster with us this evening. However, also given the, the intricacy of the conversation, I don't think 10 minutes is going to give this conversation justice. What we can share is that with the area maps that we did just recently receive, we could commit to posting the information that we have and alerting our community of that information and then bringing it back January 26th, so that people have an opportunity to review the presentation and the information through the maps to prepare for questions, which is something that wasn't available previously when the agenda was posted.
Any other thoughts on this? When we bring this back, if that's what we're seeking to do, can we put it higher up in the agenda? Seems like this is an issue where we want to have as much public participation as possible. We know that our meetings run late and we know that our next meeting will likely run just as late.
We can absolutely do that.
Okay, I see trustee Fong's hand raised.
I just want to thank Superintendent Trinell. I agree. And yes, let's do it early in the meeting. These are important items to, we can't rush through. And we thank Mr. Foster for hanging in there with us.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Foster. Okay, so we are going to bounce down to our H items, board member requests for information. Any requests for information? I see trustee Flores's hand raised.
Yeah, it was about the map, but that's okay. I just got a text saying that the person that pulled F11 is, it's, 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 well, he's there and would like to be recognized.
You know, I, I think we need to make exceptions because we have, we have, you know, we live in this crazy COVID world and we're trying to do things, technology doesn't always agree with us. If we could, I'm sorry, Beth, if, if we could allow...
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, we'll bring him over.
Thank you. I appreciate it. No, no worries. It's not your fault. It was my technology. You called on me and I pressed raise hand and it ignored me. I had to quit Zoom and reopen it. So I appreciate you letting me speak. I appreciate that, that Santa Rosa City Schools has followed the requirements to keep up with the California minimum wage of $15 an hour. However, we need to leave, lead in Sonoma County and right now Santa Rosa City is doing that, but not Santa Rosa City Schools. The minimum wage that you just accepted is 85 cents per hour below the minimum wage of anybody who works anywhere in the city except at our place of employment. We need to do better. It's a, David, if anybody who wanted to go from any other job in our city to work for us at minimum wage would have to take a 10%, almost a 10% pay cut to come work for us. Nobody's going to do that. We need to do better. I know budgets are tight. I know we're talking about cutting all kinds of things, including, you know, copy services, which is one of the last things I think we should cut. But we need to figure out how to do our best for the people who are in the most precarious position. Because it's, it's not our first-year teachers that are in the most precarious position. It's the people who, right now, are supervising our kids at lunch and we don't have enough of them when they're not sick. So please do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Micah. All right, bringing it back to the board then for agenda item H, board member request for information. Let's see, trustee Fong's hand raised?
In the future, and I know we... In the future, and I know we've talked about this before, but I'd like to make sure, and I, and I think. Superintendent Trinell, you're planning on this, grade data for the first semester that we could look at. As it pertains to how our kids are doing in terms of the A to G requirements, also the diplomas and math. Is a particular interest right now. So when you have that ready and when we are not dealing with. The emergencies that seem to be hitting us all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, trustee Fong. Others, request for information? Moving on to agenda item I, in, information, oh, future board discussion items, I1. I have a, a request. I'm hoping that in the few weeks ahead. When we get out of this current crisis situation. I'd like to extend an invitation to Santa Rosa Police Captain John Kriegen. To present to the board and our school community. About the city's new civil response, in-response program. This is a program that's designed to prevent emergencies or potential crimes by getting people. The services they need before they go into a crisis situation. I've discussed with Captain Kriegen and with Chief Navarro about SRPD's new approach. To replacing armed police officers with trained social workers in certain situations. And these situations when responding to a non-criminal and mental health-related emergency. And I think that this new resource and services are extremely important to the school community as well as the greater community at large. And also perhaps there is an opportunity for the district and police department to discuss. New approaches for the discontinued SRO program along these same lines. All right, any others, future board items? Okay, I2, board conduct and code of ethics is there. Let's see.
Point of, point of order. I mean, these are informational items.
I'm, I'm sorry, I, I'm working off of technology. Thank you. I think we have covered everything in this meeting. Is that correct? All right, we are ready to adjourn. So Superintendent Trinell, any last words for us?
I just want to thank everyone who's still with us tonight. And I want to thank. Again. Our guests who were not able to present this evening, including Kesa, Anna Mark and Eric Loachchi. Who, who hung in there to present panorama.
I want to thank all of you, our first meeting of the year. These are troubled times, but I think we can get through it. Unless anybody else has anything else to add. It is 10:58. We'll adjourn the meeting.
Good night, everyone. Good job, Prez.
Thank you.
Thanks, President.
All right.